That's funny.
I'd like to call to order a special meeting in the Paradise Irrigation District on Tuesday, April the 22nd at 12:45. Please stand with me. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Director Corolla?
Here.
Vice President Hudson?
Here.
President Duncan?
Here.
Director Fleischer?
Here.
Director Gallo?
Here.
Okay, now is time for individuals. We've given an opportunity to address the board regarding matters not scheduled on the agenda. Although the board cannot take action on any matter not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Opportunity for public comment on agenda items will be provided at the time they are discussed by the board, with comments limited to five minutes per agenda item. Does anyone who would like to speak to something that isn't on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go on to number three, 2013-14 Mid-Year Budget Review.
Thank you. Mine should be pretty brief. It's kind of past mid-year. It's kind of three-quarter year. The board has seen the numbers throughout the years, and there really hasn't been much variation from budget this year. We've pretty much had everything kind of online with the budget, not only expenses, but revenue, which revenue normally is something that does get varied from budget because you don't know how much consumption is going to be in the current year. But it's really right on budget. There hasn't been any extraordinary expenses that we haven't really budgeted for, and if there is certain things that come up to the board that are in the $5,000, $10,000 range, we do have room in the budget to purchase those within the operating budget that we already have. So what I tried to do is kind of maybe focus on some of our long-term goals that we're looking at going into the future, that you'll see in the next budgets, maybe in the next couple of years. One thing that we've discussed at staff level is creation of a long-term detailed capital plan. This is not just what you see in the budget on the 10-year capital plan. This is an actual document that has every one of our long-term capital items in there. It gives a detail of what they are, the location of them, the estimated cost of them currently, and that will be a moving target as we continue to go, and an estimated timeline on something like that. There will also be included an estimated timeline of completion. So when it starts, how long does it take to get through this? Because I think a lot of times, especially in my case, it's kind of a, it's new to me how government capital projects work. When in the private sector, you go, you buy a piece of land, you hire a contractor, it's done. It doesn't work that way with us. We've got to go through CECL, we've got to go through permitting, we have to go through every different type of public hearing that needs to go on. So it extends our capital projects, and I think that kind of is a frustration, not only for the board but for the public. So I think that that's something that we can kind of detail out to kind of give an idea. Okay, if we were to start this project today, how long would that project really take to get completed? So that's one of our long-term goals, the creation of a reserving policy. It's already been brought to the Finance Committee, it kind of got put on hold for a while, and now we're going to bring it back up to really figure out what, how much reserves we really want to have to feel comfortable with. Do we want 20% of operational budget? Do we want, how much do we need in our long-term reserves? What's that going to take to get there? What kind of rates do we need to have to get that reserving policy? What kind of cuts do we need to have to get to that reserving policy plan? Another one is the creation of a technology plan. I think throughout the last five years, the district has been, become very reliant on technology, from our media and reading system to our online payments, to our customer service, to the communication between different offices, not only the Corporation Yard but the Treatment Plant. The Treatment Plant has become reliant on technology, from their SCADA system about how the tank levels are, and about how we make sure we protect that and make sure that it's always up and running, and if, in an emergency, that we're prepared for that emergency under our technology plan. If the power goes out in this office, we're kind of, we don't have much ability to do much. Our phone system is based on power and technology, and our computer system is based on power and technology. So how that works and how those things work. My goal is to create a 10-year budget. Right now I have a five-year budget. I would like to extend that out to a 10-year budget so that we can see kind of the future, look at where we're going, look at how certain things affect us into the future, look at what kind of rates are we going to need into the future to sustain what the district is doing and needs to do. So that's another one of my long-term goals. Financing for major projects. We're going to put together a capital project long-term plan. I'm going to put together also a long-term financing projects, or a long-term financing plan, so that we know exactly how we need to budget and how we're going to pay for some of these projects that are going out there. If we need to, one of the things that I was just at last week was a, it was the agricultural summit, but the one, the reason why I went there was because it was majorly, the reliance, or the emphasis was on water. It was on water and surface projects, mainly water surface projects. And the two people there were there were Jim Nielsen and Doug Lamolfo. And they're very interested in water surface projects. And what do we have? We have a water surface project, right? We have a dam that needs to be replaced. What, how do we need, what do we need to do so that when we go and talk to one of those legislators and say, hey, how do we get on your radar to put this on a bill, a federal financing bill? How, what do we need to do? That's, again, that's my federal long-term financing plan. Is there federal funding out there? Is there state funding? Is there grant funding out there for us? And if there is, where do we need to be? Does it need to be ready to go tomorrow to be in, under construction? Or do they have financing for us to do studies, to develop it, to understand what we've got to do to do that? So that's, that's another long-term goal that we're looking to do. And then create an ongoing rate study template, meaning that we have a way that we can just patch numbers in and it spits numbers out, that we're not having to do just a full-blown rate study every time we want to go, well, we want to do this project here, what's going to be the impact on our customers? To have a rate study template to go, well, this is what we're going to need to do to raise the funds to do these capital projects. So those are some of the long-term goals from the finance side, from the administrative side, that we are going to be trying to get done in the next couple of years. And my conclusion of my mid-year budget review is that there is no budget adjustments necessary. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them at this time. If not, we're going to move on to, and what, I kind of went off, a little bit off of what we normally do, but I think the board always has questions about what we're doing in the office, what the customer's seeing on their side, what it, you know, you just approved Aquahawk, what does it look like? What are we going to see, what's the customer going to see when they come with questions? We just changed our whole billing process. What's the bill look like now? You know? So that when a customer calls you guys, you can go, oh, this is what it is and this is how it is. And then our website, and the online payments, and about where, how we've moved from basically no online service to our customers to a complete online service to our customers. And that's why I have Mickey here, and she's going to demonstrate some of the new technology that we've implemented for our customers, if you guys don't have any other questions about the mid-year budget review.
Any, you have any questions? Mr. Reddiger? Bill?
I just think what he's outlined is really something we've been needing to do a long time. So I don't, I think it's great.
Yeah, since we're going down the hall.
I thought I saw Jake ahead, no.
Well, I got thinking about it. I really enjoyed your presentation, Kevin, and there's a lot of things I've been concerned about, everything in the budget you've brought out here, and I would like to.
Ken?
You said that we're about right on budget. However, in regard to the increase and decrease in cash, we're budgeted for a million-dollar decrease in cash.
Right.
But so far, we have a surplus, $170,000. So in three more months, are we going to dump $1.2 million?
The capital projects is where we're, and we're off budget.
It's because we haven't implemented the expenses on those capital projects.
Capital projects always lag behind because we always budget for complete, sorry, I have a cramp right now.
I thought you were getting ready to bolt.
I'd take off or something, I don't know, yeah.
Sweat's going to start coming out.
Wondering where that $1.2 million is.
Yeah, exactly.
We're going to spend that $1.2 million here tomorrow.
I thought we were heading to Boston in the marathon or something.
But the capital projects are what's lagging me out. I'd like to point out something here, too, and that's a good, that's a good segue. There's our capital projects, and you can see where our budget was versus where our actual is today.
You've got to knock off the Little League at night. That's really wiping you out.
Need some potassium.
It's taking a toll.
But you can see that there's quite a few capital projects that did not get completed this year, and they will flow over into next year. Some of them will, actually, most of them will. And so, but the big one that we had this year was the Corporation Yard, and you can see where that is. So you can see that we're almost lagging about $800,000 behind capital projects. Here's our Corporation Yard budget, and you can kind of see where, where we are to date. One thing I want to point out is right here, the PID labor, of the $500,000 of PID labor. That is not savings to the district per se, it's cash savings to the district, meaning that that cash was encumbered, no matter what, if we had our own crews doing it, or if the, we hired somebody to do it. And so the board decided that they were going to take an opportunity to, with our low water loss percentage, and have our own crews do it. And that has saved the district big time when it comes to a cash reserve savings, because without that, the district would then either have to go find other cash somewhere else financing-wise, or raise rates. There is just no doubt about it. So I think that's been a huge, a great decision for the district to do that. And then you can look up here, and the cumulative expense just for the building itself is about $2.3 million. That includes our own labor in there, too. And I think Jim just talked to Slater and Sons last week and asked how things were going, and he said that he just had a, basically a mirrored project of what it would cost, and they, I think they got the bid for it. Did they get the bid for it?
They got it.
And it was $2.7 million. Yeah. So, so I think that the district has made a good decision on, on what its crews did because of, I mean, the quality of work up there is spectacular, and I believe the cost savings to the district has been extremely beneficial to the district, so. Any other questions?
Any other questions, board? No? Anyone from the public have any questions? Okay, do you need a motion to accept the report?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the mid-year budget review report as presented.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Pass is 5-0. Okay, next item, customer service report presentation. Mickey.
Okay. Um, I kind of, is it okay that I rearrange this a little bit differently, the A, B, C?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
You don't have to stay on the A, B, and C.
Okay. Okay. Um, the first thing I was going to show you guys, because, having mentioned it, was the new bill format. I don't know how to maximize that.
It's got a view.
Oh.
And I don't have the screen out.
Okay. So this is what the bills look like this month, minus all the permanent marker.
You can use this a few months.
Oh, okay. So the fantastic thing is, this is probably one of the first months since we've went to Tyler that we haven't had a ton of phone calls about, we finally, because of the decisions that the board made as far as the billing and the ability to put the due dates in here, customers absolutely understand their bill. I don't know how to make it.
You have to press the green button.
Oh, you have to, okay. I'm getting a lesson here at the same time, thanks. Okay, so, the new bills show the service date. So this particular bill is from February to March.
So the service date is when, ah, is when you use the water.
Oh, you know what? I actually pulled the wrong bill. You have one on the agenda. The bill date, well, well, so this is an example of what it used to look like, because I pulled an old bill, so.
Can you tell that it's in the agenda?
Yeah, so the bill date used to be backdated to the reading date, and it was really confusing for customers. It's the last page.
You can see the progression. Avoids confusion.
So now, the new bill, the bill date is actually the date that we mail it. So it's, it corresponds with the due date. So the due date, under the new rules, is 25 days after the billing date. So it'll be due about 25 days after they receive the bill. So there's no questions anymore for customers, and they absolutely know when their bills are due and for what period. Is there any questions on the bill format?
Any from the public?
Does that make more sense, do you think, to the customer?
I hope so.
Yeah, pretty simple.
I've had a lot of complaints about the old one.
Okay, good.
Yeah, yeah.
We've had those, too.
We haven't had any customers calling up to thank us for the new format. Nobody's been complaining.
You're not holding your breath, I hope.
What's an average usage, let's just, you know, residential B customer, what's an average usage per month in a one-month billing cycle?
I believe it's, on average, like 34, I think, units. Does that sound about right?
So here they're at four units?
I think the, I thought the average is around seven.
That's the residential A customer.
That A customer, yeah.
So is this an A customer, looking at usage at four?
Yeah, most being A customers.
They're not, but they could be.
They could be.
In the future, because they're, they're currently on the B rate, but.
Where does it show B?
Because that's based on last year's usage, but if you look at the graph here, they've snick, you know, they've reduced their usage.
Well, obviously, due to, due to the rain.
This here.
What's the middle one?
It's summer, basically.
September is that?
September, yeah.
About 120.
Does this show what the B rate on there?
So there's 120 in the, in the summer.
120 units?
Yeah.
Does this show that it's a B rate on the, in what?
Yeah, the rate is over here.
So, right here.
Well, we can't see.
We can't see.
I'm going to show you right.
It doesn't do any good for us.
This right here.
Look at, he's got the little hand moving on your screen.
That's where it shows B. So service charge, RB.
Oh, oh, behind me. Okay, I see it, RB.
So that's where you, they'll know what their service rate is.
Oh, okay.
So, and then if they were to go into tiers two and three, it would show up here. So because they're only in tier one, it's only going to print tier one usage.
And what, how much is tier one? Where does it end?
Tier one is what?
Up to 35.
35. 35 units.
35 units, right.
So at 120, they were into tier three on this particular?
That's correct.
Right. So which is probably why they're on the RB rate. So even in the winter, even though they use very little water, they're, they use a lot in the summer.
They have a lot of landscaping or something.
I, I think they go to Palm Springs in the winter.
Yeah, I, it's, that's, that's what I was looking at. I'm like, wow, you're way up at 120, but you're at like two in January and February?
Well, it kind of corresponds with what I heard George say about most of our water use being outdoor use.
Like 75% of our water is outdoor.
That's right.
That just seemed like a huge amount of water.
Yeah, I don't know that, this is a sort of.
120 units seems like a.
Laura did this bill.
It's John Smith.
Yeah.
Yeah, John Smith on Water Drive, yeah, yeah.
John Smith likes, he likes to grow like, water and stuff.
Well, that's what, that's what I was trying, that's what I was trying to get a bearing on. Is this an, an average, house average yard, you know, type thing, or is this, you know, a two-acre parcel that, or acre and a half parcel that they're trying to, because at 120 units, that just sounds to me like a.
He was using quite a bit of usage even in the other weeks, you know, spiked enough.
It was like 80 or, yeah.
But it could be something unusual, but he's definitely up higher than, than an average of seven units or eight units, because that's why he's an RB customer. So that's why, you know, you might go, well, he's only using four units or five units in the wintertime, but they're using a gazillion in the summertime, so that average does seem kind of high.
Sure.
But it is true, a true average.
I've been monitoring our water bill the first time ever, because when it was on the little postcards, you know, we just, my wife painted, and I really enjoy monitoring these, because it's very readable and you can see exactly what you've got. And this winter, I've had a few, not as many as usual, 4-H animals there, and they're all going, we're going to the fair here in a couple, end of the month. It's amazing, you know, it's, it's very readable, and I, it's, you can tell exactly what you're using, and I'm one of those guys that, dead of the summer, I'm way thick and gone up here. But I think last month, it was all for animals, because we didn't irrigate anything at all. I think we used 18 units or something like that.
Yeah, the visual view, the graph is really nice.
But that format is really good, and I've had a couple of other people tell me that.
That's good.
And that's what you see on that monthly graph, though, when you look at that, and you look at those months. I know that that was just an example, but that's pretty on point when you start seeing that.
Exactly.
Particular months, and September, August and September are typically those higher.
Maybe help get people a handle.
And level out a little bit for a couple, two or three months, but you typically are up and then back down, and you have January, December, January.
That'll help people get an idea of that, whoa, we're like out of control, you know, and why are we out of control? You know, are we watering, you know? Exactly, yeah, yeah. Are we putting 14 inches of water in our lawn per week, which, you know, we all know just goes straight to China, it doesn't actually manifest itself in a better-looking lawn, it just goes straight down into the.
Just better runoff.
Just better runoff, and yeah, you know, if you are getting runoff, I mean, a lot of times it just straight into the dirt, you know?
Anyone from the public who would like to ask about the last subject?
Tanya, back there.
I just wanted to say kudos to staff for that, that new report. I think Laura especially has worked on darkening up those graphs. You'll notice that when April started coming out, when we started the new billing system, they were very light gray, but I talked to her about that, and she says it's harder for people to read, and she really worked with the two vendors to get that darker and to make the messaging that's down below much more clear. So kudos to staff.
Yeah, they did a good job. Okay, you're ready to go on to online services.
Ready?
Ready to go online.
You're ready to go online. You used your computer, huh?
Okay, so last summer, we went to, we changed from our Springbrook software to Tyler software, and one of the things that we purchased with that was the online account access for customers. So not only do we now have online account access, we have had for the past year or so also the mosaic meter reading, where we can get the information from our AMR system that staff can view, and then we're just about to launch the Aquahawk portal for customers to be able to view their water usage. So we'll just kind of go through all three of these.
And the Aquahawk kind of brings, merges all of those together. So it takes the online account access for the customer, the mosaic information for in-house, and it merges them all together into one big friendly environment for the customer.
So for, how do I enlarge this for people?
Well, it's up there, it's enlarged already, but for you, you're not going to be.
Okay, okay. Okay, so this is what the portal looks like when people first visit the site, and then there's some options to register or log in, and people are using the site consistently.
This is Aquahawk's portal.
This is, thank you. No, this is through Tyler software. This is not Aquahawk yet. I mixed things up, so we're going to go through.
Okay, that's okay, I was just saying.
Then we'll look at Aquahawk.
I was like surprised that there was none of their logos anywhere on it, so I would think, they want a little TM in there somewhere.
Yeah, so this is the intro page to our online payment site, and I just wanted to show you some statistics here. September is when we launched the program, and so people, I think it was mid, mid-September or near the end of September, so people immediately started signing up so they could view their access online. Now we have almost 1,500 members registered. 400 of them have registered since January. And a new, you know, 42 of them have registered just this month. So which is good, because we're still getting increasing, you know, it hasn't really slowed down as far as people being interested. And you can kind of see when we had this jump in online payments, this was when the board decided to waive the credit card fee for customers to pay online. So last month, this month isn't over, and it kind of seems since this is the end of April that maybe we should see a higher number, but billings just went out. So I have a feeling that the payments will jump from the 263 payments so far and probably meet the 500 payments by the end of the month.
Do you have to register for every meter?
You, well, you register once as an individual, and then an individual can add each of their accounts, and once you're registered as an individual, it's easy to add your account. You just, you need to know the account number and the last payment amount to confirm your, that you have access to that account.
Okay.
So the free online payments, they can pay by MasterCard, Visa, or Discover for no fee. I did the math a little bit. For last month, the 530 payments that we got, it would have taken staff, a staff member, basically about 30 hours dedicated just to taking payments.
And for that, we got rid of, and we gave them a free payment, basically.
Yeah, it's, it's.
I think we offset, I think we offset the dollars nicely there.
Yes.
What, a employee gets what, $3 an hour?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah. Only in Larry's world.
In addition to making the payments, people can come on and look at their account history. It shows basically any entry we make in our billing system, they get to see, even stuff that doesn't necessarily make sense to them. We haven't gotten a lot of questions yet, but you can definitely see, they can verify their last payments with their banks. This is actually my account. Sometimes I go on here and pay it, and sometimes I pay through Bill Pay, because I don't feel like looking at my account. So you can verify the payments that are made, and their access to history is as, they have the same period that we do. So they can go back seven years, seven years, and look at their history of payments if they want. And another feature on the insight is the annual usage comparison. And this is a really nice, quick look. This is not something, Aquahawk doesn't have the annual, you can see a whole year view, and you'll see that later, but this for a really quick snapshot of where your efforts are this year compared to last year, this is really good. You can see last year, my kids had a garden, so we used a lot more water in the summer than the previous year, but now, you know, since January, my kid's really listening to me about turning that water off, and we're using less now than we did before.
Can you only compare one year?
With, yes, yeah. It just gives you this year compared to last year. There's also an option, we don't have it enabled, though, because you can only do one or the other, to compare it to other households. So you, you could actually, you know, if we wanted to, instead of giving this view, we could let them see what their usage is compared to the average household.
Won't Aquahawk have something similar to that, though, in it?
Maybe.
I think it's supposed to.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does take a bit of, we're going to have. Yeah, it does take a bit of, we're gonna have to, customers are gonna have to help us with that. Because they're, we're gonna, you know, there'll be a way for customers to enter their household size, their lawn size, things like that, so it can really be comparing. Similar neighbors.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so I'm gonna go on to mosaic real quick before we go to Aqua Hawk. This is, um, the presentation, part of the presentation that George presented at. The landscaping workshop, so some of it might be redundant, this is just a quick overview of how our metering system works and how we get our information. Um, our meters store a lot of information, but they store it, they send it to us one day at a time, basically. Um, so for instance, customers will call us thinking that we can see their usage right now and we can't, we can see it as of yesterday. And that will be the same with Aqua Hawk, just so when we're looking at this, even though the two interfaces are different, the data is exactly the same. Aqua Hawk is getting its data from mosaic.
Will customers ever be able to look and see their meter? See if it's moving or not?
Soon as they walk out to the street?
No, I mean without going, I meant online.
Not, yeah, not in real time, but they're gonna be able to see their hourly usage, which is almost as good.
Almost.
But they can still walk out there and see if it's moving.
Right.
If they know where it is.
Yeah, if they know where it is.
That's true.
Mine's in my neighbor's yard.
So our mosaic system shows us our, we have a couple of different ways of looking at information in there, we have numerical data that can be exported. So that we can see actual hourly numbers instead of just a graph and that way, um, we can put that into Excel or a database program, be able to. Get averages and, um, we actually give information like this to the town quite a bit and help them with their, um, some of their septic. Research. Mosaic shows, this is a monthly view. Um, you can see patterns really well in mosaic, so this is a customer who was watering. Six days a week.
A week.
Yeah, and you can tell how much water they use when they're not watering. This is the same customer's daily watering schedule, so you can see. For instance, we can help a customer figure out their actual timer settings that they have. And, um, help them reduce that if they wish to, you know, some people, we've had customers on here and I don't have an example of it because I couldn't remember. The customer names, but we've had customers who have, um. Set their timers backwards. So instead of running it for two hours, they were running it for twenty-two hours.
Oh, no.
Yeah, and the mosaic system has really helped us, helped them figure out what that problem was.
Wow.
And this is if we have a customer that is not following the policy that you guys implemented, this is how we would. Prove that they're not following the policy, it's very easy to see when, what time they're watering, what days they're watering. If, and if they're following the policy in the correct manner.
You know, along with that point, and I was gonna mention someplace maybe a director, I've had several people. On their water. Devices, they cannot set it for the days that we put in, they just, there's a machine that cannot do it. And there was one person, I'm still on a board with him also, and he just spent five thousand dollars last year upgrading his whole system. And the. Machine cannot do what we are asking it to do, without him being out there all the time, you know? So I hope what he's done, the guy that put it in would, uh, has went low volume and all that, which is gonna make it fun.
He can't set it for odd or even days? Five thousand dollars, you can buy a sixty-nine dollar rain bird.
I haven't talked to him since we had the guy back out, you know?
We've had many calls like that and we are, we're trying, we're trying to be flexible with, with them and saying that if they're following the spirit of the law. Which means not watering every day. That we, and if, a lot of times what they're saying is that they're watering every other day, which means. A lot of times, sometimes they'll be watering three times a week, sometimes four times a week. Um, so, and some, and you know, so, so you're flip flopping on odd even days, we're, we're, we're trying to work with them. To say, are they following the spirit of the law, which means are they watering, not watering every single day? Is there a day in between that they're not watering and so we're trying to be flexible with them.
Cause they were, they were kind of, I bet you I've had a half a dozen people talk to me about that very thing.
And just have them call the office, tell them that we're, 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 we're just, we're trying to run by the spirit of the law and we're actually noting their account that they called in. And that, that we've had a discussion with them and that they're, and they're abiding by the spirit and so then therefore they're, they're kind of free to, to do what, to, to abide by it, so.
That's great, and I, and I'll pass that word on, in fact, and I don't have the ability to program them blasted things myself, I'd get one of my grandkids to do it. But ours, which is not a very expensive unit, I can program it, right now it's working four, four days, it's not working at all now, I got it turned off ever since it's got, but. Uh, I get it to easily do three or four days a week. You know, and, but to get it to do this, I wouldn't be able to do that. Anyway, that's good.
One of the things, the other things that we use. The mosaic system for is determining and notifying people that they have a leak. So the way that mosaic works is it is gonna. It doesn't want to be a bother to people, so if somebody just has their water on for a few hours, it's not gonna tell us that there's a problem. It waits twenty-four hours. And once it sees that there's been usage every single hour for the previous twenty-four hours, then it will add a flag to the account saying that there's a leak. And in our view here, the pink days here are when there's a flag. They call it an exception, we call it a leak notification, because I don't think there's anything else that it is.
That's it, yeah.
Yeah, so in this instance though, even though it's a good system, um, this leak started. In the evening, it wasn't flagged until the next evening, which means we weren't notified that it was a leak. Until the very next day, so it was almost, you know, it's several, several hours and as, as you can see the. The usage on this meter, you know, it ranged from a thousand gallons down, I think the lowest was four hundred and forty-eight gallons an hour.
It was a big leak.
Yeah, and, and it's, sometimes it's difficult to even see that it's a leak, I mean, it could have been, I think in this case it was actually a sprinkler malfunction. When we talk to the customer, it's not a steady leak, we can see breaks quite easily because they're flat. You know, they don't go up and down. Here is one customer's account where we can see what their watering habit was like in June and then, um, of two thousand twelve as well as two thousand thirteen. So, um, when they look at their bill and they ask why their bill went up, we can tell them it's because you're watering a lot more than you used to be.
Six days in a row.
Yeah. The leak notification that we do through Datamatic, um. Our guys are able to go in and they'll pull a report and they'll get the highest users, I think it's over ten units a day. And they will personally go out and notify those people or we'll call them, you know, if we have their number on file and we can reach them personally. We use our automatic calling system right now, um, we take data. That we get from mosaic, um, we compare it, we compare two days, because we don't want to harass people right now. We compare two days where it says there was leaks on both days and then we use our automated calling software to call those people. It, I was really impressed, we talked to a customer who was using Aqua Hawk and they said that their leak notification system. Just the analysis to determine who had leaks, they had one member of staff devoted and that's all that staff member did. And we've got it pretty much down where we take that data and just swoop it into a database. And spit it out to the software and it probably takes about ten minutes.
That's all in-house develops on database.
Yeah.
That we, that staff has developed.
And now we will go on to Aqua Hawk and I'm hoping that my. I hope it hasn't timed out, let's just see real quick. Takes a minute to log in if it has timed out. Okay, great. Now coming some showing up there.
I don't know why it keeps doing that. Keeps changing. There's Aqua Hawk.
I didn't want to show anybody else's account. Um, just for customer privacy, so we're looking at my account. This is one year view, it's the default view that you see when you open up, when a customer signs on for Aqua Hawk and they go in, look. The default view is one year. It shows you the water and the nice thing, the thing that I really love about this is it shows the water usage in billing units on one side. And on the other side it shows it in gallons.
It is nice.
Yeah, yeah. Um, it also shows the corresponding weather, so it shows the temperature as well as the rainfall. For that period of time and so we can see back here in July. I'm guessing this is, yeah, the end of July, I remember the beginning of July, it was really, really hot. Um, and so you can kind of see what you had to do that time, I think these. Are hoses left on by kids, but we can, um, we can click on it and see exactly what was used that day. Aqua Hawk was really nice to work with us because generally they just, um. When you sign on with them, they, they just start grabbing your, your mosaic data from the time that you sign on forward, but. We had a special request that they go back a full year so that customers can compare. Their usage, you know, their efforts this year to what they were doing last year. So, um, this is an hourly view of June eleventh and you can see that something was definitely left on, but we discovered it. Turned it off.
Can you kill that bottom X where it says reset Firefox?
That right there?
Yeah, so there, okay, now I can see your times.
So you can also see your last thirty days.
The temp, the temperature, probably, they probably didn't go back and grab temp from previous year, did they?
Well, they did, it's, yeah, the temperature is there, but I, I'm gonna talk to them about which. Station they're using, because I think it was much hotter.
I was gonna say in July, I think it was hundred and sixty-four degrees.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that was, maybe it was a hundred, maybe it's a hundred and four, but.
So this is the daily view of, um, the last month. So I can see my usage from March twenty-fourth all the way here through the latest information, which was, um, the twenty.
First.
Yeah, thank you. I'm like, there's nothing there. As a customer. You can also have, so for instance, you can see, I, I'm not the owner of this property, the owner is someone else, you don't have to own a property to.
Who is Douglas Duel?
He's the owner of the property.
Oh, oh, you rent?
Yeah, and so I'm on here as a registered user.
Oh.
And Karen up front, she's also on here as a registered, this is our, our sandbox account that we play with. So, um, I have different settings in Karen, you can kind of see what was up here, when I signed in, I said I wanted to be notified by text. She said she wanted to be notified of events by emails, so I was in here. Playing around with the alert settings and I told it to notify me if I, if it thought I was gonna use more than thirty-five hundred gallons this month. So, and it did like the next day and so then I figured out that was probably too low for me. I got a text the next day saying that, yeah, I had used too much and the nice thing about this is, um, it keeps a history. Of everything that, so we can see this as staff and the customers can see it. So we can, you know, definitely tell that a, that a customer was notified of an event. If the meter shop, if they decide to start using Aqua Hawk to. Find their high leaks in the morning, they can put a note, went out to their property, the note, the customer logs on, they're gonna be able to see that our staff. Came out to their property or attempted to call them, there's several nice things about the messaging.
The customer will be able to go online and get all this information that you're showing.
This is what the customer will see.
This is what the customer, yeah, this is the customer.
I'm assuming that Douglas Duel's number is twenty-one oh one, right?
Yeah, that's our account number.
Account number, well, what would you punch in and get the, have this information go up on your screen?
When you sign up, when you sign up for Aqua Hawk, you're gonna need to know your name, your address and your account number.
Cause I'm really interested in following this, you know, for my own information and for my place. And there's several things I want to be monitoring and. So what can we, I guess we can sign up now, right?
You can sign up now, staff is going to be trained May first. Um, and then I believe we're gonna be doing some, um, probably some beta testing before we go live, so. Anybody who wants set up or who wants, um, get with me and I can definitely help you do that and we can get some ideas and some. Um, input before it goes to the public.
You can be a.
I was, I was thinking we should get it on the, uh, the sign downtown.
As soon as it was, as soon as we're live, we're gonna do a major.
Yeah, it'd be nice.
To get people to sign up.
Yeah, I was gonna say it's unfortunate that the parades this weekend and that'd be a great time to.
Oh.
Isn't the parade, isn't the parade this weekend?
You?
Yeah. Yeah, to maybe get something on there that says Aqua Hawk is coming, you know, register in May or.
It's, it's gonna be ready, I mean, you could put it in the next sensor if you're. Oh, yeah, yeah.
You're talking about the screen there in front of our, or the.
Rec center.
Rec center, yeah, we're gonna get.
Yeah, well, because you're gonna get a lot of coverage this weekend, where people are actually moving slower than normal. Yeah, well, I mean, normally you're driving by it, so it's hard to put good information, you gotta put a, you know, a one second blurb up there or something, it's gonna catch your eye, but you're not. What are you gonna look, you're not gonna read as you're driving up the Skyway, so you need something, yeah, water alert, is that what you said, yeah, exactly, yeah. But you have an opportunity this weekend, you know, to do something maybe a little more extensive that.
Uh, question, if somebody rents from you, uh, will the renter also be able to have access to this along with the account holder? So if, if he doesn't have the account number, he's gonna get that from his landlord?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, and that's a good way to confirm that they have permission.
Uh, HCF, hourly cubic feet?
That's hundred cubic feet.
Hundred cubic feet?
Hundred cubic feet, yeah.
And that's what we bill in?
Yeah.
And so that's why it's an important number.
You can click on this and change it to gallons, if you prefer to equate things to gallons, it's really nice. So this little quick snapshot shows you basically how much you have used, if based on your trend, what you will use. And then it also estimates your bill for you. So when you do, when you do your alert settings as a customer, you can have it notify you based on projected dollar amount or current dollar amount. Or, um, water use. So it's, it's pretty nice. The view for the district is a little bit different, but I didn't really want to show it because it shows everyone's names and all of that, but, um. It's very quick, we can see every account at once, we can sort, for instance, there's fields in there that allow you to sort by, um. You can find your top ten users, you know, for the last day, for the last week, for the last month. You know, and definitely find people that may be, or businesses that need to be targeted for, um, you know, conservation awareness.
Very nice.
Can you find people who have decreased usage significantly by percentage in the same grouping? Like if you can find the top ten, could you find the top ten losers who have the greatest decrease over a time period?
Um, the time period is relatively short, so. I don't know as far as doing the comparison.
You know, yeah, it's told to, I gotta have to do it and we can talk to.
We can definitely find the lowest users, that's, yeah, that's not a problem, but as far as. It doesn't really show us like what they're using now compared to what they used last year.
It could be they went on vacation for a week and then you got Joe on one side and he's actually conserving water and Bob on the other side is, went on vacation for a week and so. He didn't use hardly any water. That's not a silver star though, because, you know, it's, because he was in the hundred and twenty range the next week, so.
Any questions?
Board, audience? Yes?
Uh, I heard you say that you could use that and the town actually gets the information coming in for the septic tank. Does that mean you're reporting it to the town? On how many cases or is it just calling, you have to say, it's Bob Thomas. I wanna know what he's using.
Correct, correct. They ask for usage, yeah.
Just for a certain person, not for everybody?
They never ask for a person's address. They always ask for a particular address.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright. Thank you.
So if people talk about it, please promote Aqua Hawk. Get them online, get them in control, get them online payments. We really wanna push our customers to the online because not only does it get them empowered, but it also helps staff from, uh, having to ask, answer questions and, and, uh, time, time on the phone, taking payments, anything like that. We really wanna get our, our clients on, online.
I know, I know you're aware of it, but I think it's June seventh and eighth, the Garden Club is putting on a function. They're trying to take care of whether or not having a tour. And I know we were talking at the conservation meeting about having a, a booth or something and this Aqua Hawk would be a real key one. And then I know George, we're agreed to do a booth down at the Norback.
Right.
On the twenty-seventh of May, and that's one of those things we wanted to highlight, you know, because a third of the people there will be landscapers and people from paradise, so.
Yeah, and I talked to Mickey about-
The simpler, if we, the simpler we can boil it down or maybe have it on a tape, you know, that would, that just runs and reruns, you know, you don't wanna talk about?
Yeah.
It's like selling a piece of equipment or something.
And Mickey's on that. I asked her about getting, uh, some type of demonstration for that and, uh, she said that we could probably easily do it. And we could probably get some type of PowerPoint presentation that kinda gives feed. And if someone wants to sit down and say, well, you know, explain to me how this works, we probably could have a, just kind of this live demo or something like that up and running, so.
Aqua Hawk probably has a loop fee.
The Garden Club on the sixth, the seventh and eighth, and then the one down there at Norback.
Right, we, and we've talked to the person that's doing the Garden Club already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Through email.
That'll be good.
Aqua Hawk probably has some kinda little promo.
Yeah, I think.
Video loop that we could, you could run.
I haven't seen one.
I think we're gonna create our own, so it's localized with our own logos.
That's fine, yeah.
That's what I-
I was just saying if there was tight, if we were tight on time, that, that, I'll bet you, they must have some kinda promo.
They should, but I don't think they do.
But I think we could easily create, I'm, I'm hoping we could do a video up screen, show somebody going through it, clicks.
Yeah, that'd be cool.
Alright.
Kevin, what's the approximate cost for processing an online payment?
The approximate cost of, it is, we've done this.
From the, from the vendors, from the credit card people?
Yeah, it's a two, two twenty-five. Is that what we've kept going?
It's about it's a dollar twenty-five. Yeah, it's a dollar twenty, it's under two dollars because it's a dollar twenty-five. Um, from the inside service itself, that's a flat fee, and then it's, the credit card is a percentage.
Yeah, it's like, on average, it's on average, two dollars.
Yeah.
Let's just say that. On average, the credit card processor takes about seventy-five cents and then our, the power user, the, the website that we use takes a dollar twenty-five per payment, so it's two dollars, approximately two dollars per payment.
Okay. Just going back to Mickey's statement about approximating, so saving, you know, thirty, thirty man-hours. At twenty-five dollars an hour, that's seven hundred fifty dollars, not counting the fringe benefits, which are gonna move it up another, what, fifty percent or so? So if you did that, then you'd be about a break even. But it's not gonna be a money saver.
It's a time saver.
Time saver.
Because we're using our time.
Time spent on something else.
Yes.
On training customers to use Aqua Hawk.
Well, that's, yeah, well, there's that, the number you're not calculating is the number of them doing something productive on the other side of not having to do that.
Or hire somebody, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Any other question?
You know, that's, that's thirty hours spread against the whole month. I don't know how you would I don't know what that would look like when you hired someone.
Also, I, I would imagine that once you build up enough traffic, that we go back to the vendors and say, we want a better deal.
Yes.
With more volume, but.
I think you're always definitely looking for the next better thing, yeah.
I know from our business, we're constantly negotiating.
Is that your presentation?
That is.
That's it.
I like that. It's nice and seems friendly. It's got some photographs, few cartoons. Looks good.
We need the coyote in here somewhere.
Why, uh, because it looks like a desert?
Yeah. Okay, uh, go on to the item. Next item is two thousand thirteen year in review report presentations. Information only. Water supply and treatment by Jim and Bill.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mickey.
You're welcome.
Directors and public. So my name's Jim Passanese and this is Bill Taylor. We are the superintendent and supervisor at the water treatment plant and we're going to review the accomplishments that for two thousand thirteen. These are the same, basically major projects that I report to you on a monthly basis, so I have reduced my monthly reports by about fifty percent. So you're only seeing what I'm talking about as major, less some of the things that are very, very important, but I can't, I can't regurgitate the entire monthly report. Obviously. So these are the major accomplishments, actually. So these, this is reoccurring activities that we do every, every week, month, or annual, on an annual basis. Uh, just to maintain the water system. So we have annual reports to our regulatory agencies, CDPH and the regional board. Our bacterial sampling, safety is ongoing throughout every single day. Emergency planning is something we're always concerned about. Operator certification is a requirement. We, we work in around two dams, so we're always dealing with that. Staff does perform our equipment repairs and inspection, something that I'm very pleased to see. Many agencies don't have the skills of our supervisor and our operators and myself, but most of the repairs are really under Bill's direction. We don't bring in outside services. As is distribution doing the corp yard, we do all of our repairs in-house. Same kinda savings you saw presented. And then, of course, around the lake, we do ongoing brush and tree removal to keep everything looking as tidy as possible. So I'll go now through just every, there's twelve months, so every, these are the major projects in January, so we we, um, we have to inspect our tanks, so we attack the raw water tank, remove sediment. We were involved in actually pulling the cables to our new phone system. Um, we had no issues reported for the Department of Public Health inspection, something I'm very proud of. Our guys and, and our ability to, to do that. Then the A tank project starts. It's a very, uh, time-consuming capital improvement project that ended up, we ended up with a really well-prepared rehabilitated tank. And then North Boat Launch Ramp's project started, which has culminated in a, a grant. We're very, we're very proud and look, really looking forward to the North Lake Boat Ramp, Launch Ramp, which is at currently Boat Launch Number Two. Started, uh, with a County Fish and Game Commission grant presentation, ongoing presentation for many, many years. Next month, you'll see in February, we were awarded the fifteen hundred dollars that we just spent for this fish, Kids Fishing Day. The presentation I made in January will be for two thousand dollars awarded for next Kids Fishing Day. And then when we start kicking off Kids Fishing Day at this time of the year. And number eight is, was a very large, substantial shaded fuel reduction project. And by this time in January, we'd already finished thirty-five acres and moving on to the second phase of approximately another thirty-five acres. If you'd like to ask questions, maybe from month to month, that might be best. If anything, anything, um, so you, after going through all this, it's a little tedious. And I'll try to, I will try to get on with it. So here's our, uh, raw water tank that, at the plant where we, um, drained it and inspected it. We still have potential work that we plan on doing in terms of rinsing out the inside. This is, uh, our A tank, and you can see the corrosion under the I-beams. It's really quite significant. You can see every single I-beam has corrosion. They were basically all replaced. You can't see a lot of the corrosion that was under, and especially this, this area here, the, um, that holds up all the rafters was really badly corroded. All that was replaced, basically. And more examples of corrosion on the ceiling plates, roof plates. You can see the significant corrosion. You can't let that go much longer. It did go way beyond what it should have. But right now, now it's all branded. Yes, sir?
Yeah, Jeff, you said your right question as we go along. What do you do to control that or how do you stop it?
Well, we have a cathodic protection system we'll actually be installing.
Okay.
And, um, that is what takes care of that. Jason Bell, our, in, our operator, has, uh, certification and knowledge about how to install and press current cathodic protection systems for the tank.
How long did it take him to get, who, that certification? It's quite a process.
Um, is there a certification exam?
Yeah, it's just like your treatment.
Just like, you have to take a competency exam?
It's taken a few years.
So it takes a few years? How many, how many hours of continuing ed do you have to have per year?
I'm not quite sure, but
Keep up your certification.
We, we do, uh, he is a member of NACE, National Association of Cathodic Engineers, Corrosion Engineers. Yeah. So he, he does have, uh, contact hours he has to do. We send him to a conference um, once a year, which pretty much takes care of that.
Good.
And he gets to, he get, that means he gets to meet and talk with professional corrosion engineers. So, and then this is a great, uh, drawing, conceptual plan of our boat launch, which y'all seen. Should be a great project once it gets moving and possibly in two to, two to three years, we'll be constructing that. So this is, tried to take before and after pictures of shaded fuel. I think, um, lots of this is Manzanita, I believe, yeah, right, Bill? And, um, so it's just an example of shaded fuel. Idea is to get all the fuel off the floor of the forest, cause that's really what's spreading the fire. Okay, so we go into February and it's a great day where Bill was provided a, a very prestigious award from AWWA Cal Nevada Exemplary Operations Supervisor Award. They, the selection committee, having talked to them how they went about selecting, they look at, they like to see organizations like ours because they know how many hats we wear. Um, many agencies supervisors are focused in one way or another. They're not as involved. It's a selection of committee also knows how tight our budgets are and how we strive to do things on our own to save, save our district money. This is inherent with all kinds of water systems, just like ours. There are a lot of water systems with lots of bills around. Um, Bill was however, the best of the best during two thousand thirteen. So, now, we had a violation of an uncontrolled discharge. We had to report to the regional board. That was an unfortunate piece of equipment that malfunctioned, caused the discharge, was, that was reportable. We, we have not received a fine on any of our discharges to date, fortunately. I believe that because the regional board has been aware, is aware of our processed water recycling project and the steps, the, um, actions you are taking to move forward with that project, they realize that and there's no sense in taking money away from us that could be put into that project. So let's keep moving forward on that processed water project as fast as possible. Lee and Roe, we need to get moving as fast as possible. I'll just leave it there at that point. It's taking way too long for our engineers to get their act together. I won't say anything more than that at, at this point in the presentation. I might have more options later. Um, so we inspected another tank, removed, removed sediment in this point. Um, here we use Cal Fire to help us actually, um, brigade the solids out of that tank, so at a very, and a, a cost savings measure that Bill organized. And we finally got the new phone system completed. Uh, here we show the grant. Um, number seven is where Greg Dobbs and David Orr were commended for their work, um, on the shaded fuel grant project that, uh, that was a result, that grant work was a result of Buick County Fire Safe Council getting that grant money for us. And Greg did absolutely great job. The shaded fuel work is, is done really well. And of course, David Orr helped a lot. So, and then here number eight, we're, we're continuing to do more shaded fuel in the second phase. And we, we were requesting reimbursements. So here's, so here's, in, in terms of our processed water recycling project, here's the two ponds, nice view that we're trying to fix the process that we're dealing with. This is an old way of doing it. We're gonna have alternate three is what staff's recommending as a solution to remove these from service permanently and to stop discharging to Megalia Reservoir, which as you know, is just down the hill from there. This is the equalization tank. I said that where the Cal Fire helped brigade the solids out. There were a lot of, lot of solids in this tank. For that, for us to remove and without Cal Fire's help, it would have been very difficult for us to meet the times, timeline to get tank back in service. Another effort to try to get before and after pictures of shaded fuel. Okay, so March, uh, we started evaluating, uh, a filter three A, which we were worried about getting media loss and we found nothing overly of overly over-concerned, but it had to be investigated. You can't let something like this go on um, without understanding what, what we see. So, um, they did a great job in doing that. A lot of handwork done digging out those filters. And we actually then completed the new phone system and became operational. Uh, part, number three, part of the Department of Public Health Technical Manager and Financial, TMF it's called, tune-up survey is something very important to them, Department of Public Health, as it will be for the regional board when they take over. This is absolutely critical to prove that this district is well-managed. Technically competent and financially capable, or we won't get grant money. And currently, the um, B-res, CDPH project has received, whoops, sorry. Has received technical approval. We've received managerial approval and I expect this is, financial is done. But they have yet to send a letter to CDPH saying we're good. So all of those elements of the B reservoir, uh, SRF loan are actively done. Per their, per my conversations with their, uh, staff. Yes, done.
Is this the five hundred thousand dollar grant that you were after?
Yes, this is for a planning study.
For a planning grant.
Right, for a B-res.
We're pretty well in line. Does it look like we're pretty well in line to get it, as far as you can tell?
Yes, it's moving forward at their pace.
At their pace, yes.
Which is a governmental pace.
Well, glacial.
Yeah, it's, uh, yeah, the glacier still hasn't melted yet. So, uh, A tank is the next thing we could talk about. They're, they're completed the interior and they're blasting and, you know, but now they're exceeding the calendar workdays. They, um, bid the project wrong. That was their problem. They bid it, they bid it low by about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
We'd like that.
They, uh, didn't get that kind of money. It was laundered, yes, sir. We didn't, you remember back, there was actions that you took last year about how we, um, we worked it out. It was fairly amicable. They lost over a hundred thousand dollars. They lost big money on our project. Yes, Ken, you kind of remember the actions that we took?
Yeah.
It worked out. There were no lawsuits. Hooray. Okay? There was not a lot of, there was no dissensions, there was not, there was, it, it, the contractor handled it in a very professional way. And so, in essence. They, what, the, the part of the problem is, well, let me just say, the owners of the company began to turn to be very contentious at the very, very end, and the managers that I worked with told the owners, "Leave it alone," so to speak. "Leave it. Let's get over this. Let's move on." The owners decided to back off, because they wanted, they wanted to start counting beans. And, um, it was, uh, a day of, of some, uh, stress, waiting for them to, waiting for that response back from them to see how, if they were gonna pursue their, some tact about trying to recover part of that hundred thousand dollars. They did not, as you well know. So now we start, because of that A project, we became very familiar with pump station number two. Sepp asked me one day if we could stop hearing about pump station number two in my reports. Well, um, that was a very difficult time in March, April, May, June, July, August, um, worrying about outages in A-zone. And further on in the presentation, we see a final resolution of some of pump stations, some of pump station number two's problems with outages during very high heat. So every year, number six is about our purchasing our trout for Kids Fishing Day. We, we did a new tact last year where we bid out, um, we obtained a stocking permit, which is a brand-new requirement, and then we scheduled our California Fish and Wildlife releases. One thing that we, during that purchase, um, action item, the board, um, agreed to purchase trout from outside the state, which, and the, the relevance of that is that the trout come with health certification. It's a great decision. In the United, in, in the California, they don't have to provide health certification. They don't have to be tested. It's quite an expense. So, um, this was something that Greg Dobbs absolutely was insistent upon, really. He, he was aware we had to bid, but, um, it was kind of obvious to Greg that we should be buying from Oregon, where the closest hatchery to us is. And they, we've actually been doing, did business with them for a very long time. So, uh, we now have, we purchased our, all, either our catchable trout and our trophy trout from, called Desert Springs, um, Fish Hatchery.
Does the new permit require that we have certified healthy fish?
No, nope. Nope. There is an importation permit that I make the, the rearing hatchery get, but no, um, no. With the stocking permit comes from Fish and Wildlife, and all they really want to know is me to pay my sixty dollars to know that trout are being stocked in our lake, and what, and, or basically that's what they want to know.
They just wanted you to pay the sixty dollars. I didn't really care what you were probably putting in there.
They just need to know, goes in their database now.
Exactly.
It's something that they're tracking. Dustin had a, had an issue with it, you know, he didn't think it was fair. Nobody on the staff thought it was fair, but I'm, I have to, I'm dealing with the regulators. So I have no choice but to say, "Okay, it's fair. I'm paying you the money." The regulators want it, you know, I, I, I can't, I have a hard time with, when regulators tell me, I have to do something to tell them no. Otherwise, um, consequences could be, uh, a lot of energy spent for nothing. We don't like to spend energy when we don't need to. Which means my staff time. Dealing with something. So, you can see, we, uh, completed the grant application, and we were awarded six hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the boat launch, and we're still completing shaded fuel. Here's an example of, uh, the three A, we talked about media inspection. This is work we did in-house where we cut the pipe, we, we separate the pipe, we enter on the concrete wall where you see the pipe is, we have an operator climb, do confined space entry and climb in there and do an inspection. If you had a contractor, service worker do that, it'd be, it'd be very costly. Here we have some catchable trout being released from fish and wildlife, state fish and wildlife. So where we start in April, we have Lee and Roe is still working on alternatives. And however, we, we do submit our project to the Integrated Regional Water Management Plan, um, for possible funding from the state, but it's very doubtful. We have environmental health come and inspect our hazardous materials business plan, and we have no violations to report. A, A tank is, is, um, completed, and we're filling on April twenty-ninth. Pump station number two is having substantial operational issues. Then we have our, our release of our trophy trout just prior to Kids Fishing Day, which was another successful day. Over four hundred people, over four hundred kits. Um, I think this last event, we had over five hundred, is what we estimate. Yes, sir?
Quick question, Jim. Is that pump station number two, the one down there on Moore Road?
Yes.
Moore Road?
Right.
That's the one that you guys put together, the, what I call, what I will, uh, Murphy switch situation for it?
You'll see that picture here shortly.
Okay, is that being installed, or is it already installed?
It's done, it's in service.
It's in service?
Yes, sir. Murphy's in service.
Great.
Did you have a question?
In regard to item number three, the A tank, what's our, what should we know about the, the contractor exceeding the one hundred calendar workdays by forty-one days? What does it mean to us?
They wanted a hundred thousand, they wanted a hundred thousand dollars.
What does it mean to us? Well, they lived, they lived up, basically, they lived up to their bid.
Right.
Um, they didn't try to request additional money for unforeseen, unforeseen conditions. Basically, they said, they didn't know how bad the tank was corroded, is what they were trying to tell me. We said, "We gave you pictures. You knew, we, we were, we told you how badly the tank was corroded." They bid the tank knowing it was corroded, yet they, it was substantial corrosion. More, more, more of the problem they had was, they had, their supervision, supervision on site was mediocre, or, I was being a little kinder, mediocre. Yeah, um, they were making some bad decisions about containment, um, on the job. There was prob, they, they're just, they didn't have a good plan of action on a daily basis. I think that they were not given adequate support from the main office, um, on, in terms of equipment, in terms of support, and the supervisor was sort of a loose cannon and kind of just doing the best he could, but, um...
Did they go pri, did they go primary, sorry to interrupt you, did they go primarily off pictures, or did they ever send one of, someone?
He had.
Someone from there? Okay, yeah, I knew we did a report, but they never sent anybody to, like, visually inspect us?
Tank was full of water when they had that, no, we gave.
You could still see that crown piece where all the trusses laid up to, which was probably one of the more expensive.
They were given the opportunity to come visit the tank, and I'm pretty sure they were one of the groups that climbed the tank and looked inside that. But on top of that, they did have the engineer report of what the condition of the tank was.
Can I answer your question, Ken? Jordan?
Yeah, well, I'm getting a little confused. I thought it was like last year sometime we finished.
It was.
Is this April two thousand thirteen we're talking about here?
Yes, sir. This is two thousand thirteen accomplishments.
Okay, I thought we were on to some other project that we were doing up there.
No, this is the A tank rehab, rehabilitation project. This is last year. Yeah. Okay, let's move on. So here's an example of, this is what pump station two looks like from the outside. Just, uh, and it's all, it's basically, the point is, it's all sole source of water to the A-zone. Generally, a water, when water systems are designed, they can have two pump stations and two tanks per zone, ideally, if you can afford that, kind of. We have one pump station and one tank, so that, that makes operations very difficult. If a tank fails, or more specifically, if the pump station fails, we have to scramble around. Jason Bell was, was all over this for six months on a daily basis. We were having to pamper this thing, so to speak.
So you, you alluded to, it's still having problems?
Well, we're not done with the rehabilitation project of the electrical yet. However, we, we have, PG&E did install a, um, transformers that balanced three-phase, because that was one of the problems with outages during the summer, during really hot weather and high air, air conditioning use in the area. The phases would get out of balance by ten percent. It should only be balance, out of balance by less than one percent. Once, once PG&E stepped up and installed the transformers, um, we think that this summer, we won't experience an out-of-phase power problem, power quality problem. Okay? That problem should be behind us. What's still with us is Concepts and Controls was awarded the rehabilitation of all the electrical. That's still ongoing, but we would like to get that done. It's, it should be done by the end of this month, but there's reasons why the contractor is, um, gonna be late. Personal, family, health, you name it. That poor contract, small little company of two people, both of them have had serious personal problems. I could go on and on about those problems. They're serious, let me just tell you. None of us would want those kind of problems in our families that these two gentlemen are experiencing. That's, that's how unfortunate it is.
Do you feel they're gonna be able to fulfill the contract?
They will.
Okay.
We, we have, they're, they're demonstrating skill and competence. It's just time is not on their side or ours at the moment. So here, we got some trout caught. There's some pretty big trout there. I don't know if that's at least four pounds.
That was in thirteen?
Yeah, it was in thirteen. I'll have some pictures in the staff report, um, that you'll see in May, new pictures. But the largest fish caught on, um, the event last weekend was four point five. The fishing was not that, even though we installed, we planted about ten thousand fish total, fishing was not good that day. There were lots of fish caught, but the big fish are still in the lake, because we, we planted a whole lot of fish above, over six pounds. Not one was caught. And there's a lot of five-pounders, a lot of four-pounders. One four-and-a-half pound fish were caught, was caught, and the, and the next, next down the line was three point one pound. So, um, once the boats get out on the lake this Saturday, there should be a lot of happy people.
Because there'll be a lot of happy fishers.
How much did this one weigh, do you know?
Um, uh, this one?
Yeah, the big one?
Um, I don't know, five or six pounds. It's hard to say, you know, frame of, this is a little, yeah.
Three-pounder?
Yeah, it, it looks pretty fat.
Do you?
But Sepp was out there, how did, how did your kid do? Did he?
Uh, see the little one in the middle there?
That's a catchable.
That's, that's, that's Tony's fish. Went nicely on my plate that night, you know, so, yeah. I can't, yeah, I can't complain, it was, wasn't too much. Yeah, exactly. He was extremely happy, because he got scum the past three years, four years, so.
It's almost as long in his arms.
Yeah, exact, yeah, yeah.
Butte County Fish and Game, who gave us the grant, would love us to put all this-sized trout in the lake. But I think why this kid has a smile is because of this one. And this one here.
Those are good-looking fish.
Fish and Game Commission believe that what they want, all they, all kids, little kids, want to catch a fish. That's their position, and I respect it.
Did they dump fish at both, uh, over by the parking lot and then up at the boat launch? Everything was up at the?
All at the boat launch.
The north end, at the boat launch? Okay, yeah. That's what I figured, because they get back in, yeah.
A lot of them try to get back in the truck.
Yeah. Well, I was always surprised, you know, I mean, it just shows how quick they migrate, but I was surprised how many that-sized fish, like Tony caught, were over on that side of the lake already, you know, and the, the... Yeah, it was like two Tuesday? Wasn't that the, the day? Yeah, so.
They move around pretty quick.
Greg had, Greg had told me, but then he kind of, I don't know, he forgot. I mean, he said that the fish need to be in the lake at least ten days or a week, a week ahead, not days ahead.
Kind of acclimate.
Right. And recently, he hasn't, he told me that, but recently, yesterday, when we talked about it, he says, "I don't know why they didn't bite."
Yeah.
They just didn't bite. I mean, these fish.
Well, you could tell they were kind of running at a school, because you kind of watch up the shore, and you'd see like poles, and they come, and they come through, and then, be quiet for like twenty minutes, then the next thing you know, and then, and then, and then, and they go right back up the shoreline, you know, I mean, if, if these guys were hitting, it'd be like, "Get ready, it's coming," you know? And they hit us for four or five minutes, and then it'd be dead, you know? So they're definitely swimming around, trying to figure out where they want to be, but.
Back up the, back up that other picture, the picture you just had with the two youngsters. I judge a lot of different stuff, affairs, in fact, I'm on my way to Las Vegas this weekend to judge one. Photography is certainly not one of them, but that is an award-winning picture if you really set and analyze it. The gleam in those young people's eyes and their smile, that is a banner picture, really. It really is. You set and look at it for a moment. You need to frame that one, Jim.
Those kids have been gone for years.
Huh?
Those kids have been gone for years. Their dad takes them almost, every year that I have been there, he was taking the kids there.
Yeah.
There's a lot of families that.
Are they local?
Why, I was, what, I bet? I had the good fortune of meeting some this time up there, you know? And even though Jim was saying that it's not good fishing, they, they said it's a great day to fish.
Yeah.
They were worried about not catching any fish.
Did you tell them about the two boys and the, that they both caught the same fish?
Oh, yeah, that was a good, I heard that on our side of the lake, yeah.
There was one fish caught by two people. One line was in, one hook was in one side, and one hook was in the other.
Was that the three point one? I think that was the three point one. Yeah, Tanya was telling us, yeah. Yeah, exactly, that, yeah.
But at least that fish was hungry.
Someone wasn't paying attention to their pole, that one was just carrying the line around with them, you know? Decided to pick up another one.
Think about that catch.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. Got to be awfully accurate.
Here's the final A tank rehabbed. It was, uh, it was done, the work was done well. The tank is rehabilitated for ten, good ten years. So we start into May, and we have Project Wet, which we're doing this next May. Our treated water tank sump pump repair, we purchased a replacement pump. This is one of the things we did in-house. We evaluated our chlorination capital upgrade, uh, with chlorine bleach. Remember, you guys authorized the transition from bleach, of, away from gas to bleach. And we're waiting on that, to fold that project into the processed water recycling project, because we don't want... Cause we don't wanna have any conflict. If we install something, we do the project early, we could have a conflict with the process water construction, so it's prudent for us to wait. And, and plan both of them exactly the same time and fold the costs into the project. So we had an earthquake. We, um, exercised our emergency response plan. And operators did what they were supposed to do on that day. Here, we finally, back in May of this year, we're soliciting pump station number two rehab for the electrical system. And so it's a year later and we're into the work, but got another month at least before it's done.
Jim, can we back up to number three, real quick?
Right.
Will we be using chlorine gas at all?
Not after we're done with our.
As I understand, the chlorine gases, which is called our dichloro bromo, right?
Yes.
Will that be, will this bleach, we, we, we?
A lesser extent.
Huh?
A lesser extent.
Much lesser extent?
Yeah.
So that?
But it'll be there.
But it'll be there, but at a very low rate?
It will be, we, we have.
Slightly lower rate. I wouldn't say it'll be a very lower rate.
Okay, yeah. But in, in other words, the reason, the reaction of the industrial bleach versus the chlorine will lower the rate of that dichloro?
I can't, I, I really, no, I, I, that's not a very good.
I understand why you went, went for the chlorine because of the, this bleach is much safer. You did a great job presenting.
Chloramines is what's used to, as a, to lower the disinfection byproduct.
Right.
But, but bleach is still chlorine, it's still the same active agent.
Yeah.
So really, what, you know, it could be a slight reduction, but it, that's really not gonna change things.
It's just definitely a safety, it's definitely a safety.
It's a safety issue.
Definitely a safety plus for us, you know?
Right, it's major safety and it's a, it's, and it's a huge, not safety, but it's a big capital savings. If we were gonna keep gas, it would cost twice as much to rehabilitate the gas system as it would be to install a brand new bleach system.
It's just the overall risk of that. When I first, when I first joined the board and we were talking about it, I was like, you know, just the, if something catastrophic happened, it would not be pretty. There's no, there's no other way to slice it. It would be a bad day.
It would be a very bad day.
Yeah.
Yeah, I used, I used to do a lot of work with that.
To get rid of that is just such a, a plus.
It's a bad day and it lasts for eight, for.
A while.
Years later, consequences of what happened on that day.
Yeah.
People don't forget.
Yeah, yeah.
And hopefully the person and the health problems are, that may have been acquired that day or not chronic.
Yeah. Such a good thing.
Good.
Thanks for backing up on that one.
Okay, so we have the wet festival. We got some happy kids. Those are some very happy kids. Unfortunately, this is how they look when they come to our treatment plant for a tour. Okay, that's not a good thing. We have to corral, some of these, you gotta really corral these kids when they come to the plant. It's okay out in the field and a, and a, um, they're having a great time. Just wanted to let you know how.
Spinning, spinning circles in the treatment plant isn't the way to go, right?
Dealing with our plant tours when they act like that. And they're running, yeah, well, you know, that way, and circles too. And streaming and outbursting and anyway, uh, like this, like, uh, like this guy, he's, he's not, they're not a problem. Not a problem at all.
The only good kid there is the one in the red, and that's because he's just standing there, but.
I think he's taking.
But he's got something, there's something guilty going on there. The fact that he's got, exactly what it looks like. That's what it looks like. There's something guilty.
On the other hand, when we have charter schools come, I'm just, I'm just saying, there are some behaviors. They're there for a reason and they listen, okay? Maybe I should, there's a difference. I just leave it alone. Of my observations, there is a big difference. Um, so there, this is, this is, uh, the water treatment plants, um, build a filter and the kids are proud of what they've done, clarifying their water. So halfway through, if you have, you're hanging in there with me. We're cleaning clarifier screens. You'll see a picture of that in a moment. Level of effort, we've repaired some skater systems. Leon Rowe is refining options now. NPDS, uh, we're doing some major pollutant sampling. I would say this is one of our biggest wastes of money because of our NPDS permit. It's a long list of things that we are required to sample for that we never get, we don't get detects on at all. This is just data for them. It has, it's just, it's part of the permit that we'd be glad to get rid of when that, that day occurs. Pump station number two, still having issues, um, but PG&E is starting to step up to the plate and help us with power quality issue. And Doug, yes, Doug?
I was wondering, uh, now this natural gas pump is unreliable. Isn't that the one that you put the Murphy switches on?
Yes.
The pump itself is just.
You'll see that picture.
Huh?
Here, you'll see that picture in a sec. Yes, that was the one, yes. The Murphy panel was unreliable.
Pump itself is actually unreliable.
Pump, pump is not that, no.
The controls that were running the pump were nothing but a nightmare.
Okay.
The pump, the pump is.
Was fine. It wishes the controls kept.
So they don't have, they, okay, we have a power loss, which is very critical at that station, I know. That pump doesn't come out by itself. So if someone asks you to start it up, it doesn't always start. Is that what we're saying?
Or you would get it started and you would leave and it would quit.
And it would quit, yeah. What can, what do, what do we have to do to resolve that? What do we have to do to resolve that?
That's been done.
That's, that's what the, this was.
There's a picture.
The Murphy controls were replaced, which replaced all the engine controls on the engine, so that fixed that. And the ongoing skater project that we're doing, the pump station two skater project, is going to change it so we have remote control from the plant over that pump. So if there is a power outage, we can put that natural gas power online from the treatment plant.
I just need to upset your whole presentation. You're doing great. Keep it up.
Don't worry. I'm glad Bill explained that. So here's an effort to try to give you some information about parking. The main, the main parking prior to and after the season, that's what I'm trying to display here. So af, you can see these figures. We have a seventy-seven average per week. After the season and then, um, a hundred and fifty.
Basically off peak season and.
During the season.
Peak season.
So, um, that's the level of parking. Our, here's our launches. We're getting about thirty-one launches per week during the season. And we've, we got a donation of, we have a Bear Saber trash container that I'm giving really good reports on. We were, this was donated to us by Butte County Solid Waste, um, for free. And David Orr says that it's just really great to have these, these Bear Saber trash containers, um, out at the park. Cause the bears do love to dump, pick through our trash and they can't get through this one.
How many are there?
We have three so far delivered. Here's a picture of the operator. Th, this is the, um, upflow clarifier where we're getting a staining and plugging of materials and the operator has to go through and high pressure spray these, these screens with this level of effort. Both Jeremy, um, and Bill did all this work, um, within a day or two. So it's a pretty tedious work, but, uh, I heard no complaints. So it's great. Uh, so this is an example of the Bear Saber. Um, the good thing about it is what I understand is the size of the container inside here holds quite a bit of recyclables, which is a big improvement over what we had in the past. So they don't, so, um, the guys that work up at the lake don't have to empty them very often. And the bears gave up trying to get into them.
Just like with the restrooms, they're such a nicer looking.
Yeah.
Trash receptacle too compared to. Just, well, just like when you drove down, I mean, Bill was one of the first ones pointing out, you drove down in the parking lot and you had like this sign that blocked ninety percent of your view and then you had an ugly bathroom and then some ugly trash cans. It's so much nicer when you pull in there now. It's just like lake, you know, right there.
Great on Kids Fishing Day this year and quite a few comments about it, actually. And I was happy to hear about the sign.
Guess we've actually had four installed to date.
That's all right.
So here, uh, we had another, uh, NPDS violation of aluminum. And this is just, uh, taking a sample on a particular day in Ja, July, we exceeded the interim limits. Keep in mind, we generally meet the interim limits, but actually there are actual final limits in our permit, which we will not, which we would not meet. In our current permit, they have final limits. We're given interim limits because they know we can't meet the final limits currently in our permit. Here's one occasion in July where we exceeded the interim limit. That, that's how poorly, that's how low the final limit is. We, it's unattainable. Um, this is just a, this is a program throughout California that, um, monitors all groundwater, puts it in a big database. We participated in that program. And in the ponds where we dry our processed water, we haul about, my estimate is ninety cubic yards to the landfill. We, uh, just.
I recently had people ask me about that. What, what, what's in it that requires us to landfill it rather than, than, um, some process at some other way where we could make, um, some soil additive out of it or something? People would ask me and said, experience and so forth, and they looked at the new flats and said, oh my God, you're gonna have all this to haul and landfill?
I believe that, well, Bill has comments, but I don't think there's any nutrient value in that at all. It's just mud. It's just dirt.
I think we're just lucky that we can dump it at the landfill in the first place.
It's no nutrient value.
It'd be nice if there was some kind of nutrient value, but I'll tell you what, I think it's just nice that we can get rid of it.
Apparently high in aluminum.
Oh, okay. All right, so I have an answer for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So here, unfortunately, I have to talk about pump station number two again. But, uh, we had, and here we had to rent a generator because.
Pump station number two just keeps coming back.
Yeah. Um, we had to repair some perimeter security for number six and we refurbished the Zamanzki's, uh, family memorial bench with treks and installed a new bronze plaque. That was a special request they had, even though the district had a standard of concrete benches. Um, the Zamanzki family, um, wanted us to refurbish their bench with treks and install a new family, so we accommodated them.
Excuse me, does that mean that we're gonna accommodate anybody else who has existing benches out there?
No, we'll be, try to.
I thought it was great we accommodated them, Ken.
No, we really, I mean, I.
I know, Bill, because it's against policy.
I, maybe we probably make it clear at the onset, our standard is concrete and and just, and let them respond. Um, but they have to be aware that that's our board directed policy on our standard for concrete benches, so. Um, maybe they should, it should have really, I could really bring them back to the board and plead their, their case if they really have to, no?
The treks will, the treks will hold up for years past what the wood did, so it's.
Okay, I won't.
They can, you know, anybody can bring anything to the board if they want to.
But anyway, that's the way that one turned out. Don't plan on doing those again. But it looks really well. You'll see a picture of it here. Here's the generator we rented. We, um, had it there for two months. I believe the total cost was sixteen thousand dollars, so about eight thousand dollars a month as insurance, just in case pump station number two failed and we couldn't get it back running. Now, the thing is, it never, during that two months, never failed once. We were able to keep it running because of what Jason and Bill did to pamper.
Well, also the fact that we had that big box sitting there.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Because without that sitting there, I believe it was July third, the operator got the alarm that the pump wouldn't run and he messed around with it for about two and a half hours and could not get it running. And so they got cat on the line. They got the generator up there and set and as soon as the generator is up and set, the other one won't run.
It ran, continued, we were able, it wasn't easy to keep it running. It's not like it just ran by itself. It was constant monitoring, um, on a daily basis to switch things over between the gas and the electric and electric and gas and back and forth and back and forth. Whichever one would run, we would leave it on.
Bill's got a future in modeling, uh, heavy equipment though. He's in a lot of these photos. Do you notice that? So we're gonna have to maybe get him out there, you know, modeling some of this stuff, you know?
Uh, here's the refurbishment for Zamanzki with the treks. Here's the B reservoir where we, the perimeter detectors are. Part, they're, they're not in that picture actually, but nevertheless. The perimeter detection there at that, uh, reservoir stopped a lot of kids from getting on top of that floating cover, which is delicate. And, um, there's a huge horn that goes off if they penetrate the detection. So the kids have learned, um, not to go on there anymore. So it was a huge improvement.
Do they still throw rocks?
Uh, yeah.
A few. But the rocks are way better than the parties that used to occur.
Oh, okay.
Really?
Oh, yeah. It's the town's biggest water base.
An interesting fact about this, we do get animals that cross. The fog will set off the detection and if we don't tell the police department to stop rolling, um, they will roll to the reservoir and if they don't find anything, they get a little.
Excited.
So, yeah, they'll, and they, they have threatened us with false alarms, so we're, we're really proactive when, when the alarm goes off, we take the alarm and we call PD and say, you know, just, we'll let you know. So, but that's kind of a tricky part of having that great protection. There's always something.
Do we have any cameras at this site?
No.
Should we? That, that an operator can just pan the scene and see what's going on?
We don't have the skater system, the level you would need to be able to do that.
We, not with the same way we have the cam, cameras at the dam?
That one at the dam, I mean, you can't pan or anything with it and you're getting.
It's fixed.
You're getting a, a shot and then a few seconds.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
And you could possibly get something like that. It wouldn't travel over the skater signal, but so you would have to put in some other method of communication.
Transmitting, okay.
It starts getting pretty pricey.
In August, um, we begin the application for the State Water Resource Control Board, State Revolving Fund Construction Application. And as of this date, we still have a strong support for that two, two percent loan. What's pending, in order to move that forward, is Leon Rowe and our project taking way too much time, otherwise that, possibly that funding could be approaching security, um, approval, but it's taken, you know, but we're pending, we're pending your decision to make a selection of an alternative also. Soon as I have that, I can finish the, what's called the Facilities Planning Project Report, which kicks off their full review of our, of our funding. Like I mentioned, the staff at the Financial Assistance Part of the State Water Resource Control Board that administer the State Revolving Fund Loan are in favor of our project. And here we have, um, again, we talked about the five hundred thousand dollar planning application, uh, earlier. And a project that's currently out to bid, here's where we're just working on the bid documents and such, but this number three is out to bid right now. We're gonna receive bids on Monday next week. That project's moving forward. The site preparation is complete and, um, Jason Bell's overseeing that project. And here we're, we inspect the, uh, inside of Paradise Lake Automated Discharge Valve for Cavitation. Innovative way that we figured out to save some money and look inside the valve. Here's a, number five is about where PG&E installs what they call the Delta Phase Regulator, um, which balances the three-phase power into pump station number two during really hot weather. And, um, here, number six is where we're doing some improve. Greg has took it on himself to make some improvements in the upper parking, uh, upper area of the park, um, to make it more, uh, make it nicer. Yes.
Back to number five, I'm sure you hit on that pump station too. That three hundred KW generator, is that the one that's not working properly?
No, that was-
The generator with the big trailer you saw parked there.
That's the one we rented.
The one they never used.
Yeah, I thought about, okay.
That was the rental from Peterson Cat in Chico. They have a very short response time. We have, um, emergency transfer switch in place now. We could probably have the generator up and running now within two to three hours from our request.
Yeah, good.
Is that right? Yeah, two, three hours.
Do we have to pay a backup charge or not just the hell is ready to do it or?
No, no, I haven't, no, no, we didn't go there. Because their respi- because their response time's so fast, they generally have a three hundred. Not many people need a three hundred KW generator. It usually won't sit in there. So there was no reason to have a, a contract. Okay, I'm trying to, here's the discharge valve we were worried about. You can see that the big valve there, the downstream of that valve is where we thought we had cavitation. Here's the improvements Craig did at the barbecue pit and one of the trails and a fence and refurbished some toilets. September, we had the ridge water tour. We have the annual dam inspection. Final installation of the Delta Phase Regulator was done. Uh, the award of pump station number two's worked concepts and controls. We've put in some improvements at the lake, you can see there. And we started a brand-new program, Sheriff's Department Alternative Custody Program, which is a great success as far as we're concerned, was implemented. We were, we were one of the first, uh, or, uh, or agencies to participate and have them, help them, um, organize their program. And Greg thinks that's, it's very, very, Greg has a, such a great working relationship with the supervising sheriff, who basically works at the jail, brings these, um, released, these people would, instead of being in jail, they're released at home with bracelets. And they do a great job. And, uh, they've really helped Greg out a lot. So we're really happy. They're also helping out with our tank sites, um, going around removing vegetation at our tank sites. They helped do some shaded fuel removal for us last year. They do all kinds of things. So we're really pleased with that, that program.
What's their advantage to doing that?
They, the kids have to have a certain amount of, I guess, community service hours. They have to, or there's-
Part of their restitution or something like that.
Requirements.
These are the AB 109 people?
Yeah.
Due to the overcrowding of the jails, they had to let certain people go.
Yep.
So this is how they're dealing with them.
There's, I think there's three different ways they can, um, comply with being out of jail. One is the community service hours and there's two other aspects that they maybe go to school or do, get some, a job or something. But, um, some of them can't, right? Go, but they can come out to our location and do some community service work.
Do they get paid?
No. They can get out of jail free. They don't pass go. And get the new five hundred dollars. Okay, um, here's a major improvement really. Um, this is the north side of the lake. Up in, up in this part of the lake is, um, how you say it, um, not, we're not welcome. We're not welcome up here. So we, so we have-
Best bays for water.
Not, not only are we not, the public is not, oh, that's interesting. The public is not welcome past this point. And if they go past this point, they are told in a very un, um, nice way, "Get out."
This, this is old ranch?
This is a long, longstanding issue with the, the original owner, Judge Vandergrift. The family has taken it over. It's just longstanding issues with this part of the lake. Cause during, when the lake is full, this all floods back in here. So people just love taking their little kayak and say, "Oh, I wanna go there." But they're not allowed there, cause it's private property. Private property. So we have the signs as, uh-
No votes beyond this point.
Yeah.
If you cast a line over, I would technically be trespassing.
Now you're one of the pet actors. I took my kayak over there, see it says no votes? I'm in my kayak, it's okay.
Yeah, exactly.
Split hairs. Okay, here, this is a Delta Phase Regulator. There's three of these, there's one, two, three. If y'all know where Keith lives, it's right out, right in front of his house. Pretty much. That's his new view, his horizon. Thank you for helping us with our power quality. But it's, um, that project, if I, I, I'm thinking it costs PG&E a hundred thousand dollars. I really don't have a basis for that, but just my feeling. They spent a hundred thousand dollars on improving our power quality for pump station number two. You can see what structures like that cost, not to mention the construction cost to put all that in. The engineering, their planning, their, they had six or seven construction guys out on that site for two, almost two days. So that's how I come up with that kinda money. Where, they're, they're, they stepped up and they did what was right. Okay, so October, Lee and Roe still evaluating. Okay, it's not, that's not, unfortunately, it's not a laughing matter.
I heard we hadn't done anything with them for over a year.
Sorry, I have, that's my stress coming out. I'm, but, sorry, um, Larry, what were you-
We were told at the last meeting that we hadn't done anything, uh, with Lee and Roe for over a year.
Yeah. Here we have, again, just, BRES is still, you know, working itself through the process. I had to do a Class Six Notice of Exemption for CECL in order to get the project moving, which is a real simple thing really. But I, I had, I had two days to do it, so that was the only issue. We're refurbishing some of our clarifiers, you'll see a picture of that, whoops. Come back, sorry. Uh, again, we have, now we're getting the agreement to pump station number two. Lake improvements in terms of, uh, you'll see a picture of this lake improvement in terms of our signage for slippery and wet surfaces. And more bearsavers, here, more kudos to the Sheriff's Department Alternative Custody Program. Kicked off finally and then Cal Fire's helping. Here's a letter for a completed application for, um, BRES, for State Revolving Fund Planning Grant for five hundred thousand.
Now that, we have, I have one of the budgets that I've been looking at. We're looking at for that BRES, a six million dollar, that's what it says it here, a six million dollar project, knock out your five hundred. Is the goal to build a tank, maybe a concrete or whatever, to take care of that tarp that's over the top of it? That just rubber tarp over the top of that thing? As far as I'm concerned, you know, it's a-
The reason we're being funded is because of that floating cover tarp.
Yeah, the floating cover tarp.
They're not, they're not recommended. Remember, if y'all read what just happened in Portland? The kid in the, taken, leaking into the, an open surface water reservoir. Open surface water reservoirs are absolutely not, that's treated water, okay? We have floating cover, that's still a problem.
Yeah, and every ounce of water, I'm not being negative, please, don't, anybody think I'd be negative. But every ounce of water that we drink comes through that BRES.
Yes.
Is that why, I remember when we replaced it, I was first on the board. And I thought there was a twenty-year life or something in that thing and, you know, we're talking about replacing it. Is that, it's not wearing out, it's because it's this problem with sanitation?
It's really a risk factor. Having a floating cover is risky because it could be damaged so easily. And then we could contaminate our water supply because every ounce of water goes through BRES, it's a serious risk.
The cover is still serviceable?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I kept thinking, what, what's going on?
You haven't had any problems with cover, but it's aging? How old is it now? It's ten years? Ten years, so, you know?
No, I, I realize that with this aging.
Well, basically, it's just the risk of having your water covered with a fantastic rubber tarp.
Rubber, yeah.
Tarp, whatever it is, I'm not being negative, please don't take it that way.
It's a risk.
And according to the previous plan here, we're looking at six million dollars, thereabouts, for a new tank to take care of all of that?
Yeah, that's our estimate. That's our estimate. There's a lot, a lot of work to be done before that BRES gets done. A lot of engineering is, is at stake here.
Okay.
Okay, so we, this is a project, oh, this, all this, these pipes were full of rust because we were getting some water intruding from over here along this wall from our instrumentation. We put up this little rubber dam to keep the water out, but all this pipe was severely corroding. We ground the pipe ourselves, we painted the pipe, we restored this vault and the equipment that's in it.
You've painted it and it-
Yes.
I assume you took the corrosion out?
Took the corrosion out. This is our, this one was pretty badly corroded. A lot of it was surface, but you can't leave it, it just, it needed to be rehabilitated. Here's the slippery, wind-wet and icy signs that we put up. These, uh, yeah.
When, when are they gonna do the permanent toilets up there?
Um, well, it could, I, they need to finish the courtyard. When they, when they give a green light to have a time after the courtyard. And it could be next summer. I, I, we haven't really talked about at all yet, this summer, doing the concrete toilets yet because of their workload. Um, they, they have probably, you know, so we, we'll get around to talking about that eventually. But I, I have a feeling it won't be this, this summer.
As, as well as it, well as it looks right now and as it-
There you go.
Yeah.
It'll be the summer.
I think as well as it looks and the service of what it was and it looked fine sand, uh, saturday and the grooves in it. I don't think there's any reason to get any anxious to agree with it.
I think we should say that.
Yeah, just leave it where it is, we don't have to invest in a concrete thing.
You're agreeing with it? Yeah, we staff agrees with him and you. However, you got four more votes.
Well, I thought, isn't there a toilet up there that needs-
And you've already authorized to change it out, so.
Isn't there one there that needs some work though? The roof or something? Already done. Oh, that's been fixed, oh, okay.
There's, there's the cost savings.
I'll tell you, the cinder block one looked like a great idea when we looked at it and then you put those down there and I'm under the same opinion, you look at it and you go, "What's wrong with this?"
They're very functional or-
They're not obtrusive really, they, they're green, they blend in with the, you know, the habitat. There's nothing wrong with those. Yeah. You think really, as far away as that is from the gazebo?
What she's talking about is imagine a lady had a wedding gown trying to get into one of those things.
We have a solution for that, she's not aware of. We had the old concrete pump sta-, uh, restroom, which was installed by the Rotary years ago. We're starting to rehabilitate that one. And, and we do wanna make it, um, bride-friendly.
Bride-friendly, I was gonna say. I know we, I know we had talked at one point about like blowing out one of the walls and then making it-
We got-
A little bigger?
That's a two-section stall in there, there's a wall dividing to, uh, portions and that cinder wall can be removed. One side can be capped off with a, a solid floor put in for a changing area and then, uh, the facility.
That's what I was at, wondering when that was gonna be done.
With only one door, that's, we need to get that done before we do anything else.
Cause even in the cin-
The green ones are, are fisherman-friendly, but-
Yeah.
Was it still not, even in the cinder block, was it still not gonna be a, we were gonna have plastic receptacles inside the cinder block? Right? So outside of the walls are made of plastic or made of cinder block, there's really no difference to that building.
Would there be a, a handicap one though?
Except on a rainy day, it might be a little noisier, but outside of that.
Do we have a handicap toilet?
Yes, we do.
Uh-uh, yeah, that's-
I thought they were gonna make one of them up there.
It's huge in there, it's a party room. Side there.
Yeah, that handicap one gets used about five minutes.
Just waiting for you.
Actually, the location of the existing cinder block, uh, restrooms more can be used to the wedding parties.
Right.
We just need to make a, a little better path.
And it sits off to the side and it's a little more secluded. So the ladies are waiting and all will have enough room there to-
In a, during an event like a wedding, we would, we would clean those things really well. With, make sure we had the advance notice, we would, they would be very, very spotless. Okay, so November, we have, um, staff is working on clarifying the alternatives because we were concerned that Lee and Roe wasn't clarifying the alternatives. And we had another, we have aluminum violation again, unfortunately. We now, and then we're doing some work on our overflow channels ourselves. Neil started an elevation survey, we know, we, we see some subsidence out there of some of our structures. Neil started a, a survey with his, uh, engineering tools, try to start documenting that.
That, that's something we needed for several years. I'm, I'm very glad to see it happening. Cause it, several years ago, and Bill pointed it out to me, and I think it's subsided a little bit since then, not much, but some.
Why? What's an elevation survey?
Would you like to?
Sounds to me like it's gonna tell us how high the, the road is, at what elevation it'll be.
Well, the structure's, they're settling, so you might have a structure, the main part of the plant is here and you can see another structure right next to it, concrete is sliding maybe two inches down.
Those, those little blocks that we saw in last month, I think it was last month?
Part of a huge containment structure is actually dropping in comparison to the plant. The road outside of our parking area is showing slipping of pavement and cracking of pavement. There's something going on there. It hasn't, it, it did cause one problem where the pipes, where the tank farm is, we call it, all those tanks and the building, the penetration of the pipes that go through the walls snapped at one point in Bill's time here. And he had to wrestle with that, fixing all those pipes that snapped because the building is going down.
Original compaction?
It was all filled.
Yeah.
Used to be a town there, right?
Yeah.
Years ago, it's all filled.
Yeah.
So, okay, um, lake activity, we had a bunch of permits. Some of our highest numbers since two thousand. Uh, lake improvements, you can see some of the improvements that we were making back then. You just talked about the new restrooms and how, how appropriate they are. Yes?
I was in my cardiac rehab and there was three fishermen there that really love our lake. You know, of course I wore my hat when it ate. And they were just elated with the rock that was being put in there because they had been launching, you know, there was steps. So those type of things are really good for the public and good for the lake.
Um, more work from the Sheriff's Custody Program and Cal Fire. Here's where, um, this is Kenny going down in the filters to, this is a launder, I know you can't see it, I'm sorry. But they had to reattach the end of the launder to this wall, which would, which was breaking loose from its fastener. Here's where we took advantage of the low lake level to install a lot of rock down to the water level to make it more boat launch friendly.
This is the one that I was talking about that my cardiac people were elated about, you know?
Here's, um, this used to be a huge muddy area. Um, this is, um, boat launch. Number two is just up the road here and boat launch number one is down. But this whole area was badly rutted. Um, I think we, we do have seepage of water coming out from this way. But this was a really nasty area, cyclists couldn't, and vehicles had a hard time getting by this area. Uh, distribution fixed this for us. With post, with the ballast rock, I'm gonna go back. Ballast rock is underneath all that and then this is the base material on top of it. This is, um, this is a satellite.
Some high-tech stuff right there, man.
This is our new communication structure.
Exactly, yeah. It's a split nick.
Okay, what this does is, this anchors the boathouse, this is the boathouse where the boat, the gr- the boat, we put this out the back of the boathouse to keep it in place from moving. What happened is, this- place from moving. What happened is, this, this thing used, didn't have these rebars, so it would roll in the wa-, in the, down below, maybe a hundred feet behind the boathouse, thereabouts. So, the idea is this would now dig in. It wouldn't roll, it would dig in and stay, keep the boathouse where it belongs. So.
Successful?
Uh, so far.
Give it a couple more years.
But, I'm sure he's still in.
It's otter-friendly, is it?
Uh.
Otter-friendly?
Well, yeah, uh, it's otter-friendly.
Otters can go down and check it out anytime they want.
They're welcome to visit.
Okay, thank, uh, a lot of you are probably thanking that it's December now.
It's been a long year, Jim, a very long year.
Item one, Thorn and Jim's side.
Lee and Row report again.
We're just, Lee and Row is still finalizing. Oh, well, they're trying to finalize, but it's now May and they're not finalized. So, enough said for that. We had another aluminum violation. Oh my gosh. We submitted our annual report. We got our plus, uh, we, you know, December was a great month for rain, uh, snow. We got our snow cloud going. Uh, we took advantage of doing some work inside the, uh, plant, refurbished some cabinets, and put some kickplates on doors and such. Uh, we kicked off pump station number two. Um, here we got the Murphy switch installed. You'll see a picture of that. Here's some of our lake activity still going on and, um, well, the lake is now closed, but we still had problems during all that snow, and Cal Fire's helping out. Okay, here's, this is the, uh, new Murphy switch. This was the old one. This is the new one. This has been working faultlessly.
Good.
What was the old one?
This was
The brown one? Okay.
Faulty, faultless.
Whatever is which is that little brown one, right back, right back to the red?
Yeah, the little one. This, you probably can't see me doing that.
That, that red one is, what, a twenty-five thousand dollar outfit?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Good.
So here's a beautiful picture.
You and Bill did an awesome job of planning that.
Thank you. Jason had a lot to do with that. Jason did a lot of, that's a lot to be thankful for that too. This was, um, the day of the snow. Thank you for providing me with a four-wheel drive truck, which had no problem getting to the lake and back in a safe manner. I never felt like I was in jeopardy having to drive back to that lake. Thank you for having, providing those types of vehicles that we can trav-, traverse our community in conditions like this. Um, so.
Should've been more four-wheel drive vehicles on that road that day, from what I heard.
There were some two, yeah, there were, yeah. There were, there was, Cal Fire got stuck on our road. Our, my truck did not get stuck on that road, in one of their big vehicles, and two-wheel drive vehicles could not even come close to getting down there. Um, that was a beautiful picture. So here's, this is the kind of trending that I think, Kevin and George like to see, how, uh, we can track our water year to year, our usage, and we can plan accordingly. So, two thousand twelve's red and two thousand thirteen's green. You can see our, up in the upper right-hand corner, December twelve, that's an average eighty-one million gallons. But then in, uh, December of thirteen, we used a little more, but the five-year average was ninety-nine, so, um, anyway, this is the kind of bell curve we like to see. This is, um, the numbers in the upper right corner, the five-year averages are just showing the averages of, of these numbers here. Um, it, our water usage is fairly consistent in the, in, over the last five years. Okay, here's, this is really, uh, the key, was very, very important at the end. Um, this is the last slide. Thank, okay. So, we want capital, in terms of capital improvement projects, which is very near and dear to our hearts, we want to finish pump station number two. We want to finish process water recycling. Actually, we really would like to just get into preliminary design and design. Uh, we want to replace our chlorination system gas with industrial bleach. We need to do inspection on our treated water tank, and that's next week. We have a consultant specializing in leakage inspection and repair coming up and doing a dive inspection, and, cause you, if you're all aware, that, that concrete treated water tank at the plant has had leaks dating back to nineteen ninety-two. We hope to solve that problem.
And it was built in eighty?
Ninety-five? Oh, built in ninety-five. So it was two, I meant two thousand two.
Okay, so seven, seven years after it was built, it starts leaking?
Yeah. Well, there's, there's a lot more history before that. The liner failed. The tank originally was designed with a liner. Liner failed, and then there was a reason for not to replace a liner, the liner, put it back in, so it's been leaking since two thousand two. Um, we hope to fix that.
Any idea, do we have a number on the amount of leakage? Is it significant? Just weeping.
Weeping. Um, we have plans, uh, we have plans for a hydro pneumatic tank. Uh, we want to unfold that into our process water recycle project, just like the bleach. Uh, here we have construct concrete block restroom at the new lake location. They have to have our, our lake committee think about it and make a recommendation to the board. Maybe that's the plan. Talked to George how he wants that to go. And we're still haven't forgotten about the retrofit of the forty-two inch creek crossing pipelines, because we have some better al-, we think we have some other alternatives.
Well, whatever, just as long as we fix it.
It's still
Whatever you wanna do.
Engineering, engineering has come up with some ideas that might, that sound more prudent.
Okay, but, yeah, that thing's a nightmare if we ever had really a bad
This is the project, forty-two inch pipeline corrosion project is gonna, we're gonna receive bids on, on Monday, and Project Jason Bell's overseeing as our corrosion engineer. And then, uh, we have minor rehabilitation on tanks C, D, and E. So, thank you.
Yay.
That was fifty percent of all of our workload for last year. I wanted to just
I get, I, I'm sorry, but I can't help myself. You're the quiet guy. Now here comes Keith. How are you gonna cover this?
Oh, no, I'm not that covered.
No, he's the song. I'm the air.
All right, I'll try and probably check over the
What happened to the safety program?
Yeah. I'll get through it pretty quick.
Yeah.
I, I designed this to be fast, okay? I really, I, I, this is designed for me to read, to try to like what most people do in PowerPoint, um, so they don't elaborate. So this is what, this is our attempt to get a high-altitude look at our safety program. It's not going into a lot of detail. This is about planning and structure and organization, okay, and, and budget, let's just say. So, um, of course, y'all know, this is an emergency eye wash shower. Keep your eyes, if you get problems in your, something in your eyes, okay. So we go, and it's all about hazardous, hazardous waste and hazardous materials.
Beautiful.
So, what's, this is what's involved in a, in what we do on a daily basis. We have focused safety plans, which I'll give you a list of in a second. We have compliance with Cal OSHA, just scary, scary bunch of public governmental organization. The regs are very detailed to read. Okay, we have increasingly stringent rec requirements. We have the supervisors, superintendents responsible for planning, and, but the employees have a fifty percent responsibility also in making, they have to adhere to our training that we give them. We have approximately twenty-four different types of training. So not only do you have focused safety plans, but we have that, at least that many types of training. And there's more training can be happening every single year, like heat stress and stuff like that. Uh, hazards, hazcom, our additional trainings. So, the frequency of training varies by type, whether you have annual training, initial training, refresher training, every two years, every type, all those trainings have different frequencies. We have to keep track of that. It's difficult. The training is required for pers-, for our personnel related to their job description. So not everybody gets the same amount of training generally, and we have to keep track of our records because of Cal OSHA and others. Of course, it's just prudent to keep track. Record keeping is very difficult. It's something that we're always working on. So, here's, here's all the plans that I've recently updated with the help of Bill and Jim and Keith, but this is, these are the sixteen plans I just mentioned. They're all specific plans. So we have chlorine risk management, process safety management as part of chlorine, confined space, respirators, hearing, lockout-tagout, chemical hygiene, hazard communication with the new global harmonizing system. Any questions about any of those plans, what they, you understand with lockout-tagout?
No. What's lockout-tagout?
Lockout, when you're working on electrical equipment, a control panel, you have, you have a circuit breaker, something, or break, main breaker, you pull it down. Gen-, they have little locks on them that you put through. The lock is, lock it out, so no, and then you put a tag on it with a name of a supervisor and the operator who actually locked it out. That way, nobody's allowed to remove that lock unless they get permission. Keeps them from energizing equipment that might be, might be torn apart.
Yeah.
So, it's a super important.
And who are you harmonizing with down there under global communication?
This is really interesting stuff, that, that one right there.
This, this one is international protocol. It was enough for the United States and FIRE to come, come up with NFPA, which the little diamond symbols that you see on tanks and the numbers zero, one through, zero through five. This is now, what, United States put those systems together, this has now become an international system. Because you get stuff shipped from China to here or everywhere in the world, it's now a global system of hazard communication. So people look at picto-, uh, um, pictographs. Picta-, you know, everybody's familiar with that wonderful word, pictograph.
It's the global communication language then.
It's, you can now see a hazard by a picture. A stick man
I had to test one.
With a lightning bolt, means those kind of pictographs. So it's, it's about an international communication system. It's really quite important, but, you know, we're on the ridge, so what do we, you know, we're okay up here. We can handle the old system. But yet, the new system is important. These are more plans that we have on the shelf that operators and use. Heat illness prevention is relatively new. Injury illness prevention actually should be at the very top of the list. This is the district's policy plan on prevention. This, that one is absolutely super important. Fire prevention, obviously, emergency response. Excavation and shoring, the distribution is constantly dealing with on a day-in, day-out basis, and with tailgates, before they get started, they are absolutely worried about their trenches and being compliant. You never know when a Cal OSHA inspector might show up at an excavation and, and look inside. It can happen up here. Can happen anywhere. We have pollution prevention countermeasures planned. We have vulnerability assessment. We have a county hazardous materials business plan. Okay. This is an example of the training matrix that I put together. I've been using for years in my career. It has all of the Cal OSHA reference materials. Um, this is the district's IIPP reference page, which I mentioned how important the injury illness prevention plan is. This is how thorough our injury, injury illness prevention plan is. You can see how many, how many, um, our, our plan mentions lots of what, what's required. And this is a description of what's required. This is the trainings, and here's who's responsible, and here's the frequency of training. So this, this table has got a lot of information on it, and footnotes as well. So, here are resources to help us, help us put together a training program. Aqua JPIA is absolutely critical. Thank, thanks for having them around. They are a huge asset. They have all kinds of templates for us to use. I can take their template and modify it and make it specific to the district. That, that can take days to do. It's not a simple matter, but their templates, it, for me to write a professional template, those professionals at Aqua have spent weeks and months, I get to utilize that. It's not easy work, but it's fairly easy to make it specific to the district. We also get help from American Water Works, Rural Water Association, Rural Community Assistance Corp. Provide lots of training, Cal OSHA consultation of haven't, don't need to talk to them really. Outside vendors and the PAD personnel are very helpful in our, as a resource. So how do we get it done? We get it done with good planning and budget, scheduled training, conferences. We have to send people out to conferences sometimes to get trained. We have weekly safety meetings. We have tailgate meetings, which means right before a major task, we talk before we do work. Distribution has an absolute need on a daily basis to do that, because they're constantly in jeopardy of some sort of safety issue. So they do that daily. And we have to do record keeping, and we have, and we have our subject, a Cal OSHA inspection, which is a bad day when they show up. They want lots of data, lots of materials. So that, with that, thank you, and that's the high-altitude presentation of our safety program. Any questions?
With Cal OSHA, I know, we started doing this thing a couple of years ago where we called them in to give us, take a walkthrough and just take a look, not
Consultation.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're, they're friendly people. They're very, very helpful. They are not supposed to talk to enforcement, and they will tell you that. And enforcement's not supposed to talk to consultation.
Yeah.
So inviting them in is healthy. Consultation is healthy.
It is.
I've done that in previous jobs. I haven't had a reason to do it here.
We've done that here before.
Have you, Bill?
Yeah. That's good. I just, we found it so good. I mean, he walked through and he was just like, you know, that, maybe that, and this, you know. It, it was thirty thousand dollars worth of fines that he pointed out, you know, in a five-minute period of time.
It's prudent to do.
And it's all stuff that you'd be like, oh, you know.
It's like getting a, you're getting an audit of the same level as enforcement, but without any fines and that, without any stress. So it's very, it's really helpful. It's
I'm glad to hear we're doing that.
To bring them in.
Yeah, he said if more, he goes, if more people did this, it would make our lives so much easier. And he goes, it makes your inspection, they're gonna look and they're gonna say, oh, you had a consultation, uh, you've been, you've been addressing and looking at this.
That's right.
Not waiting for us to show up at your door in the surprise manner. So.
I
Well, I mean, isn't that the way, basically, they give you a little bit of notice.
Right.
Yeah.
We're having our risk management board.
Exactly.
I invited county environmental health hazardous materials inspector to our plant next, this week to participate in our chlorine audit. She's there as, even though she's a regulator, she's there on a friendly basis
Yeah.
To learn. And it's a good courtesy to invite them. They're not there, they're not there to, they're not there for the intent of inspection. They're there to be part of our solution to safety.
I think when you can invite people like that in, you automatically get in a win-win situation. These, these old fairgrounds, which I've been involved with for most of my life, down at the Silver Dollar, they were going after ADA. And, you know, you could get nailed with ADA for basic. And what we did is we brought in a group of people, two, one of them was in a chair, the other one was there, that, that actually run around and cite people. And we met with them on the consultation and said, we want to fix this fairground so it's user-friendly. And they put together the plan for us, and we did that. And you'll notice there's only one spot, that there's a curb this high now. And that's where they park their concession trucks all the time, and nobody walks there. And it, and it really worked for us, you know. And I know of some fairgrounds that didn't do that, and Christ, they, pardon my expression, they always had a case for an ADA, you know, at Hawk's White Water.
We had maybe sixteen or twenty firefighters, captains, and chiefs at the plant a month ago, giving a full tour. We talked a lot about all kinds of risks, and that's, you invite, you have to invite these people. Um, it's just the right thing, it's just the right thing to do.
Really works.
Yeah. If they ever have to respond.
It's better to have them as a friend than it is to have them as an inspector, you know.
If they're aware of our plant, they might not do some, take control. They will take control. And they, but they may not make some stupid mistakes. Or they may actually ask us our opinion.
Exactly.
What would you like us to do? Instead of say, just we'll, we'll handle it. Which is what you don't want. Okay.
Thank you.
He has some thoughts about safety.
I just wanted to say one thing. It was a couple of meetings ago where George talked to you guys and I think they asked to make sure that you were all on board with the commitment to excellence from JPIA. And what you just saw there, that's exactly what they're talking about. And when John Hoff and I sat down and talked about that after he was here for one of our last trainings, he's showing, showing me these, these slides about all these safety procedures and things to talk about and things to do. And I said, well, John, we don't, we do that. He says, oh, I know you do. But he says, you, you can't believe the people and the boards and the groups that don't pay any attention to safety. They just, it's just get here, go to work. Don't talk to me about anything. Don't come back till the end of the day. And, and they just ignore so many of these. So, there's so many different aspects in a job and what, especially what we do. Trenching, driving, backing, weight, flagging, there's so much, but we're already doing it. So it seemed kind of strange in a way, but he just wanted to give us that plaque and make sure that George brought it up to you, that we would always have the support of board to allow us to do the training and to spend the time that we do with our people to make sure that we were teaching our people and we were talking about it on a daily basis to, so it's always in the front of your mind, not the back. And to even take that home with you. Because a lot of times we get home and go, oh, I stand on top of a step ladder all the time. Or I do this, or I do that. Well, you might want to think about it. So that's what all that was as far as commitment to excellence, is something that we were actually already doing. He just wanted, he was just going around to the districts and wanting as many organizations as possible to be on board with that. So that's what that was. And, and, and we're there, as you just saw from what Jim talked about. So we just wanted to throw that in there, that there is time and effort. But when you start dealing with workshop issues, potentially accidents, losses through, for, in all kinds of aspects, losses, monetary. If you don't go through this, you're just opening yourself wide, wide open. Potentially.
Thank you for your presentation. Any questions?
We're getting that right on time.
What, what, because you guys.
Apparently at three seventeen was the.
Cause I know Bill was worried, he obviously, cause he already said it. Oh God, Keith hasn't got up there. And Jim says, just go ahead and go through it, Keith, and if they have any questions. You, obviously, it's no secret, we put a ton of work, time and a lot of our manpower into that corporation yard. Okay, you all know that. In the year two thousand thirteen, because we were using the manpower that we were, and I'm not complaining, I'm just stating a fact, we had who we had left. We had basically three major things going on that we had to spread ourselves out over. Obviously, the construction of the corp yard, the Skyway pipeline project. You remember we did Billy Road and Skyway, the trunk lines were installed? The, I'm gonna do this in quarters, basically. Skyway, we started off January, February, in between raindrops last year, with a crew installing all the service lines, the tie-ins and the hydrants on the Skyway project. Okay? I'm gonna jump back to that in a second. We went from the Skyway project and the final asphalt repairs, which was huge in itself, to the Clark Road Pearson intersection, pipeline installation on, or excuse me, to the, to the Pearson Road project where the Town of Paradise did all the work in front of the school on Pearson Road. There was a handful of things we needed to do there. Service relocates, service drops. We took care of those. But as they went through that project, there was often times where I would get a call saying, hey, we just tore one of your meter services out of the ground. We just hit this, we just hit that. When you have those kind of things going, all you can do is prioritize and reprioritize. So things would have to stop here. Crews would have to go over to take care of that. Between the Skyway pipeline project, the Pearson Road project, leading up to about September, and to throw into the mix a hundred and sixty-two mainline and service leak repairs that we did last year, we were extremely busy. Those are gonna happen regardless. But with the, with about seven people that we used between those projects there, there was never a dull moment throughout the year. Because as those mainline leaks and service lines, and of course, some of those were from leak detection, it's what we do and you, and you have to go. You just, some of it's scheduled and a lot of it is not. They just come up when it's, when you least expect it. That ninety feet there, pipeline, that was the Pearson-Clark Road intersection that we ran some pipe across the street approximately in front of King's Tavern to abandon three hundred feet of steel main that was in that intersection so that Caltrans could get in there and do that intersection overlay work. We did that to reroute with, along with replacing one hydrant, relocating one hydrant and four services to abandon three hundred feet of steel and to get out of their way. That was our pipeline project last year. And that's exactly where that ninety feet came from. A lot of that work was done at night. Because of the businesses and because of all the construction, we just worked it in when we could to make sure that we got that done so that they could get that overlaid. Contractors too, they had eighty feet last year. There wasn't a whole lot going on with contractors and that was for a new building that they put in on the Feather River Hospital grounds, Endoscopy, I think that building was, is that right Neil? Off of Peach Lane. And it was mainly fire service, one hydrant, their, their internal fire protection service and one domestic and one irrigation meter for, for that new building. You've seen these each years and that, what I just explained as far as our, as far as our ninety-five to date mileage, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to this pie from, from ninety-five inventory with the steel and the percentage to now. Of course, a lot didn't change last year because we just simply did not have any or get any major pipeline projects done. We did, we were able to abandon some things and some private pipelines, but you know where we're at with the new installation and, and footage of. Mainline leaks, where we were last year, yeah, it's, it's nothing, it's not, it's not too bad. I mean, we're still, it's, there was a little bit of an, an upswing showing. Of course, we had a hundred and sixteen the year before, but total for, for mainline leaks. And that's, that's service leaks and of course, leak detection from last year. Another graph, kind of along the same lines for the leak history. Number of leaks versus total cost. Our average cost per leak. You know, it all depends if these leaks are in roadways and we've got major street restoration or if they're off pavement, that makes a big difference in manpower and money spent depending on what kind of material we have to put back in the ground. PBs have been pretty slow. Of course, all that middle section of that graph, of course, is when, when there was a lot more and we knew streets where they were. We're getting down now because we don't have great records of where the rest of them are. But as you can see, that's slowing down. And as they break, which always happens at Friday at three or at night, it seems like with PBs.
What's a PB?
Polybutylene. It was a, it was, it's a, it's a rolled plastic piping can. They put it in a lot of mobile homes way back when and they thought, oh, you could roll a water line out. How neat is that? But it was junk and there was huge lawsuits from it years ago. And it was in, in, in our industry also for service lines. And it is, it just falls apart.
Is, is that what PGD used that type of material for a lot of their bikes?
They use the roll pad, they use the roll plastic for gas, but I do not believe it was polybutylene. I can't tell you what kind of material that is, but it was not the PB.
I've got a couple of nephews that work and some friends from four each of this stuff. This stuff has about a twenty-five year life and it's all twenty-five years old.
Yes.
And they got leaks like you can't believe.
Yeah, and as you can see, we're getting, we're, it's winding down to how much there is. And now we just repair and or replace as needed. Service leak history, forty-three, and those are steel mains. So that's mainly corrosion issues with, with steel service lines. Forty-three, yeah, I mean, you can see it's creeping up, but it's, it's, it's not, it wasn't horrible.
The system that we've been hiring, that helps to cover these up.
Absolutely.
And they can pinpoint right there.
And we're done with that, but I will be giving you guys a presentation and I'll report on that probably in the May board meeting to catch up to speed with what we found this year and what we did.
Good. Keith, a lot of those of your overall leaks though are through leak detection, right?
No.
Not the last three slides, but like from, like a hundred and two.
Yeah, last year out of a hundred and two, I believe twenty-six were leak detection. So they were non-surface leaks. So a portion. And I don't, close to a quarter, I would say, of the year's mainline leaks or, excuse me, leaks, regardless if they're mainline or service leaks, approximately a quarter for the last two or three years have been through leak detection. Of course, we're catching them early and taking care of potentially huge water losses and or problems with roadways and areas if they decide to go depending on if it's a main or if it's a service. Of course, you're talking about two different animals there as far as how much water is actually being lost.
Yeah.
But it is a very interesting process and we do get a lot of things caught early, which is good. It, 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 it works very well. Especially when we're having a drought year, a year like this where, you know, you, we're asking customers to cut back and we've got things going on that we want to catch as fast as we can. Average cost is certainly expensive to fix leaks in this day and age. But again, it all depends, a lot of it depends on where they're located as to, as to what that total cost is and what the average ends up being. And a lot of it is asphalt repairs that need to be done in those areas where we are in the road section. When you're off the road in a bar ditch on a bank, you got some sand, put some dirt back in. It's a lot quicker and easier to rectify than it is when you're in the middle of a street. Not to mention labor and power, manpower for flagging and things of that nature.
What's that patch, QPC, Q?
Our, our hydro patch, that's good, yes.
Jim comes out from behind you, looking at me. Is that, is that the name for that? QPC?
QPR.
QPR.
We, we used a cutback, a temporary patch for years until we got there to, to put in permanent asphalt. That hydro patch, we believe, and we've been in, in Town of Paradise and we continue that, we've got some test patches. It's very hard to tell if it is applied right and if it is put in the ground in lifts. It's hard to tell in about six months if it's permanent asphalt or not. It stays very well. It's been, it's expensive to buy on one hand, but it is working out very well because we very seldom ever have to go back to repair a temporary patch in the winter time before we get back to do patch paving in the summertime.
Callbacks are way more expensive, doesn't matter.
It's, and it, it is a very good product.
Five minutes, five hours, a callback costs you more money, doesn't matter how you slice it.
Yeah, we're mobilizing the huge cost.
Don't have any more roads like the one by Safeway that Phil pointed out to me?
No, no.
Okay.
No.
The new patch is taking care of that?
What we have now, of course, we will be getting into those here in the next few weeks, Bill, as soon as this weather goes and the plant opens back up. We do have quite a few patch repairs that we have to catch up on that we were not able to get to last fall. We are in pretty good shape as far as complaints and having any issues with anybody with those. As far as that Elliott Road, no. And we will do everything in our power to never get ourselves in that position to where we would be open for that again. That was, that was the last of those.
I hope so.
At the moment, yes.
That was pretty much a disaster.
It was, it was, it was a nightmare for all of us in town. It was, it was just a nightmare. The hydrant work, yeah, we didn't have a whole lot of leaks or replacements. Again, between our projects and private contractors as far as how many hydrants are going to be added fill-ins or replaced or repaired. As you can see, since two thousand and nine about, it's about, it's been about the same. It's, it's been about the same. Our new corporation yard and, and Jim wanted me to go through these, but you know, certain, a couple of things if you have any questions. And if you would like when we're done, if anybody has the time and would like to take the time to come up and have a little tour of our new corporation yard, we're going to invite you to do that if you would like. We're gonna have our grand opening in June, but if some of you wanted to come up after this meeting, if you have the time and just do a walkthrough, Jim and I'd be happy to go up there and.
You, you ought to look at their new kitchen and their new screen. It's really impressive.
Yeah. The, 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 these guys, of course, there's been, we've been up there doing this for a long time. We all know that, but there is a lot of pride that's been put into this corporation yard. There is, Jim has been overseeing the entire project. He's done a phenomenal job. We've got guys there that are pretty dang talented. Not all are. They have done very well with what they know. They have learned a lot and you know, it, I know me, I've been here a long time. I missed going to that old shop for two days because my truck was on autopilot, because that's all I've known for almost twenty-three years. After day three, I went, oh no. I, I can get used to coming into here. You know, it was, it's got sentimental value to me for sure. And we've, we've taken one, one particular part of that and brought it with us. And I believe it's in this slide right here. And it's our, it's our sign from Black Olive. Because for some of us, for a lot of us, you know, that was home. That was our house for a long time. So it was a great idea and I, I don't know if it was yours particularly, but there was a few guys that says, you know what? We need to bring that, salvage that sign and put it up just for old time's sake. Just for those of us that spend a lot of time going to Black Olive.
You guys spent a lot more time there than you did at your actual homes.
We did. We, we did.
There's no two ways about it.
Yes. So I just, I just, there's just a few slides here. I, I know that, I think everybody here has been to the front of our old corporation yard. And here's a shot of what it looks like coming to the new. It's just a, it's just an absolute huge difference. It's such a neat building. Here's being in the, down by the bike path. The park is in the foreground of that picture across from the police station. This is what it looked in the back of our old facility. And this is what it looks like, kind of looking in the same direction from the back. That's tucked out over the bank behind Rose Chapel there. Our fuel island here is on the, in the front of this picture on the right for our diesel fuel and our unleaded gasoline, just another picture. Looking at the front, what it looks like on most days, you know, especially in the, in the, in the morning time at the, at the front. Did you want to add something?
I wish I could have got a better picture of this. It's something that I really like. When we did our pipeline project on Forest Service Road, we replaced an old main in there, an old fourteen-inch steel. And one of our field crew members comes in, Jim, 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 I found something weird in the ground. And he described this thing and I said, well, I don't know what this is, let's look it up. So I did a little research and I said, we need to dig this thing up. Talked with John Price a little bit about it. We just exhumed that last year. You get a chance to go up there, go up and check it out. It's a twenty-four inch valve, gear-driven valve that had been in the ground for, I don't know how long, probably since the thirties, I'm guessing. That was an old, old main line that was in there, a very old valve. You can see where it'd been repaired with an old hack weld job up in there to keep the bonnet on. So that's just kind of that showpiece when you drive in there. It's pretty cool to look at.
It was a, it was a good, it was about the best place we, we had there to display that now.
We considered the, at the intersection of the building right there, but it's so big and it, it really actually makes a good baller for fuel island.
Are these trees dying?
Those trees are long standing.
Oh, they're gone. Yeah, they look like they're dying.
They were just hibernating.
No, they were dying.
Yeah, those beetles really just.
They took their toll.
Really got bad. Well, two, two out of the three, the beetles tore up.
I got, I walked up through the day they were taking them down. They had a big derrick in there and everything. It was really impressive taking them down. Cause they didn't want them to fall on our new building.
That tree service company is really good. They did a great job all the way through for us all, all through the project.
We decided here in the front, this is in the, in the front of the L, in the, in the corner of the L, there's a piece of pipe right here. And this is, this is the piece of CML concrete morte line steel that got that horrific split in it that night about six months, seven months ago down over the hill from Ace Hardware. that got that horrific split in it that night about six months, seven months ago down over the hill from Ace Hardware.
It, it's the, the, the one in the background next to the post. It really shows it to you, if you're ever curious to how you can lose, what was it, two or three million gallons of water?
It was more than we like to talk about. Yeah, and the, and this happened in the brunt of it in a couple of hours. It's, it was very unfortunate, but we thought, well, that's a night most of us will never, you know, won't soon forget. So we brought that up for display in that corner. This is the, our kitchen area that Bill just spoke of. This is where we, we, we try to keep this into, on this side for the guys for our, you know, for our, our, our breaks or our lunch areas. These tables over here is more set up for training with our, with our TV. We can, uh, we can move information from our computers from Jim or mine onto that screen for mapping, for training, for, for lots of different things. Um, it, this here, I think, I think our kitchen, break room, training room, it, it's almost as big as our whole warehouse was down at, down at the old, at the old building. Again, this picture's nice, but it won't do it justice unless you have, or until you have a chance to come up and take a peek at it. It, it's, uh, it's quite a facility.
I, for one, would like to thank the board and the community, um, for allowing us to purchase that TV up there. It has made, um, and will make future training, um, very, very nice in that building. You can hook up to it wirelessly, you can go through the network. One of the things that's gonna be really helpful for us and, and David gets it's working on uh, electronic version of our mapping system and we're collecting data now that we haven't collected in the past when we're out in the field as far as condition of the pipe, uh, depth of the pipe, different, different bits of information that we need for that that are going to make our work in the field, our response to leaks, a lot better, a lot safer. And that, that tool right there, um, is going to be, it is now, it's already proved to be beneficial and will be proved to be more beneficial, so thank you for that.
Yeah, didn't you tell me, Keith? Ken would like to know about this, do you have a training thing on, uh, the investment portfolio for the employees?
Yes, yes, that's right, that's right. Yeah, it made with, it's to a purpose, um, and it's so far, it, it's just working out fabulous and being that we can hook right to that for any kind of training, for all kinds of informational purposes, we have it right there in a nice room. The guys, because when we moved in, it was winter time, they couldn't believe that they could actually go into a shop at six o'clock in the morning that was, that had heat in it, that was warm, you know, it was homey.
Well, don't spoil them.
Man, I know I don't.
We keep the temperature down.
Yeah, we do, yeah, yeah. We only have a span about that big. Um, this, this is our, this is our switch, transfer switch from the old corp yard for our emergency power for our generator. And this is our new one. This is how much things have changed in fifty years probably.
We had our, our maybe voyage of the gin set a couple of months ago and then just last week, uh, we got Eaton Electric to come up and, um, start up the, uh, transfer switch. Uh, it works wonderfully, um, that, we still have a CMU wall, uh, to build around that gin set. Um, with those doors closed, that is one quiet generator.
And that, this, this is the one that sits here at the, at the far end of the parking lot in the corner.
Switches over nicely, there's plenty of power there in that gin set to run, um, both of these buildings. It's set up that way, we switched, uh, from two meters or potentially two meters. We're running both buildings now on PG&E beer. Part of the cost of the project, I'd say a fairly substantial cost, um, was getting that gin set transfer switch in and including the electrical side on this. If you recall, um, PG&E used to serve this building, uh, through a drop down that utility pole here and underneath this floor and into the entrance panel, service panel, uh, right in this corner here. Part of the deal was when we built this, that we would get rid of that line right there and come through a meter over here and back down here, so that was a, that added to the, to the cost of that. But there's a huge benefit in that too, now these buildings are connected and that generator right there definitely. We don't have much of a load, uh, we'll check the load again in the summertime, but when we did our load with this building and that building running at, at average day during the winter, we're pulling forty amps. So that's really small.
This is one happy crew and I can honestly say on almost every day. And this is a, the, as many as we could get in this picture last week, um, that we have onboard now. And I'm, I'm here to tell you, I've been through a lot. I mean, I've made twenty-two, twenty-three years may not be a long time for some, but I know for me and, and working here for the district, I've seen a lot of people come and go, I've seen a lot of changes. Now that I have a big part in what happens here and how this operation is run, I can honestly say we have a, a great bunch of people and that's not just the, it's plant, it's office as a whole. It makes it really easy to get up and go to work when you know you've got people that have their mind in the right spot, going in the right direction and really do a good job for the, for the customers and the citizens of this town and it's, it's a lot to be proud of. Uh, future projects. Of course, I talked about asphalt patch repairs, we're gonna be doing those sooner than later. Leak repairs are ongoing, we've been in the middle of repairing, uh, leaks found through leak detection. Of course, hydrant work, uh, PB replacements always there until we know we've got them all, all replaced. Like I said, they just rear their ugly head when they want to and usually it's not at a good time. Um, flushing, of course, is absolutely dependent on weather, lake levels. So we did not do any last year and of course, we're not doing any now, but that will come. Uh, leak detection, I will report on that in the next month or two. I'm waiting for a final report back from, um, uh, leak detection from utility services, but you'll be seeing that. Of course, our maintenance issues, office, lake, our yard, that's ongoing. Valve maintenance and flushing programs, we do those when we can. It's all dependent on our workload. Cross connection and control, backflow policies, we're continuously working in the right direction with those. Uh, wells, um, any potential contaminants that may be on any property in town to make sure that we never get that back after these guys worked so hard to get this water produced at the plant and we keep it in these pipes to deliver it. We don't ever want to introduce any unwanted anything into that. So that's where cross connection control and the backflow comes into play. And of course, continued growth and safety and our training issues and we talked about that. And I put that in capital, always provide excellent customer service. We hear a lot from our customers, I live it every day working here. You, everybody here knows if you've ever called the utility, I don't care if it's AT&T, PG&E, Comcast. Yeah, I gotta be there next Wednesday from four to eight o'clock at night, are you kidding me? It's almost unheard of anymore. We have always provided excellent customer service, you guys have always allowed us to do that. Maybe we go overboard once in a while, I don't think so, I think we're here doing what we need to do. And that is to make sure that we take care of our customers and there is never a time that they don't go home and turn on that tap and there isn't excellent water flowing out of it. We have our issues, we jump on them as fast as we can, we try to rectify problems as fast as we can. And I think that's something to be proud of. Thank you. Bill, I talked as fast as I could.
You did good.
And you're one of the fastest talkers.
Well, I didn't want to lit, I, I, we're over by about twelve minutes. Um, ha- after you've adjourned, like I said, if anybody would like to go up, we would be more than happy. If you can, if you can, we will do it whenever you have time. Thank you guys very much.
You have enough hard hats?
I, I think we ought to thank Christie for lunch, didn't you arrange it?
Georgiana did.
Georgiana, thank you for lunch.
We should thank Georgiana for a nice lunch today.
Yes, very much.
Okay, any questions of Keith? On public?
Our guy reports that the city was changing one of you guys' uh, uh, repeater stations on top of the stop sign, is that true? Or was that you guys did it?
On top of what?
On top of the stop sign.
Well, we do have some repeaters on some stop signs and street signs and if they didn't need to make a sign change or we're doing maintenance, that, that is possible. What they'll do oftentimes is they'll find a street sign that's been mowed over by a vehicle or whatever and they will bring us that piece of equipment, that repeater and let us know that it's missing off of the sign and we generally go back and reinstall it. It's possible, Lauren, I, I don't know if this.
Well, they said it was a, they said it was a truck, a white truck, but it only had a round sign, it didn't have this.
No, no, that was, that was a town paradise truck.
Okay.
But they're well aware of where they are and if they did that, were able to take that swap, that's great.
They have some repeaters to make?
No, 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 if it was just a sign swap.
Oh, they were changing out the sign, okay, I was gonna go.
And they just needed to replace it, that's probably all they did.
Okay, no, no.
There's been a couple of times where signs have been run over, stop signs have been mowed down and they're replacing the sign and we know that there's a repeater there and they'll put that on the pole when they say.
Yeah, yeah, no.
They had one of our house last week.
They did.
Tom heard that truck drove out and someone got out and took the repeater off the sign. They said, put it back on for the owner and on the road away.
Yeah, no, and we appreciate that that's, yeah, because they, you know, we have their permission to have them on there and anytime they can make that swap for us, when they hit the ground and they break, get that happen, get the, get the, just run over. Then they bring it in to us and then we have one of our people go out and reinstall the repeater.
That's it, I didn't even hear, it was just sitting there. Oh, my coworker.
The other thing is, just, just, well, I got you on the, on the string there. Uh, how is those batteries working out? Those batteries working out as, as predicted or are they?
We're, there is some batteries earlier on some of those fireflies, especially in the meter boxes. They're not doing badly, it's a little too soon to know that it's going to be a major problem because what we're hearing is some of the batteries in those fireflies, depending on the batch, could have been a bad batch of fireflies. Okay, not necessarily the entire batch. So it's a little too early to tell if that explain, that's, that's, that's the best I can, I can give you. It raises eyebrows, where's this going? But it's, it's too soon yet to say, oh no, they're all going to hear this grief before they should. Yeah, it's just a little too early, but we monitor, we have a count every month. I've been putting it in the monthly staff report in mind, letting you know how many fireflies for the month have had problems. So it's, it's, it's a little early to know exactly where that's going. Yeah.
Okay, now it's time for, uh, directors comments. Seth.
Well, you're gonna start off with me, okay. So I wanted to thank Georgiana for the lunch layout today, uh, Kevin and staff for, um, a very comprehensive, uh, mid-year budget report. I'd like to thank our superintendent and all the supervisors for taking time out of their busy schedule. Um, and the hard work you do every day of the year, I know it's hard to leave your half a day's worth of work and you just get to make it up twice tomorrow, so I mean, it's not like you, you got it for free. Um, and I wanted to thank you guys and I really mean this, for your commitment to excellence. Uh, we made a, a paper commitment to excellence. That doesn't mean half as much as what you guys do, your commitment to excellence because we can go to bed at night and rely on the fact that we're gonna have good clean water to drink and that you guys are on the ball and, and on it. When pipes burst in the middle of the night, you know, that's a treacherous situation down there. That's not, you know, you got millions of gallons of water going everywhere. You guys put your lives on the line and you make sure that we have good water and we appreciate that. Um, and your, uh, commitment to safety, that's, I don't know if everybody gets it, but in our business, it's every week, Cal OSHA's got a new rule that they want you to implement or do something with and it's almost impossible to stay above board, uh, with the amount of rules that they lay on you. And that's not an easy task, so I commend you guys on doing that. And then, uh, I'd like to thank everybody, um, that had something to do or, or worked at the kids fishing day. Uh, talked to a few of the people walking around that were, uh, signing up the kids for the raffles and stuff like that. And I said, so, uh, what's your affiliation with PID? I, I just like doing this, I, I come every year and I just walk around and, you know, and do this part, you know? It just shows how much people, uh, a lot of, you know, Greg lovers, you know, Greg just, you know. One lady, she goes, Rick, and I go, Rick? I'm like, I'm like, who's Rick, you know, and she goes, she goes, Rick, he takes care of the lake. And I, Greg? Yeah, I always call him Rick, you know, and she goes, but you know, she just loves, you know, Greg is just loved up there and, uh, and we're fortunate to have him up there. He, you guys organized a great event. Um, everybody I talked to when I was walking up and down the shore there was just having a great time and, you know. Y'all come at fifty cent hot, where do you get a fifty cent hot dog at? And I said, I said, you know, it's, isn't that great, you know? Come out here, bring your family, have a, you know, seven AM, have a fifty cent hot dog, you know, there's nothing better than that, so. Uh, I just wanted to say, um, you guys did a great job on it. You guys did a great job on it, all these poles that are in here shows how you guys are working to get these donations out there. Um, a lot of great support, so I just really commend you guys, everything you've done. Thank you.
Okay, Ken?
No, Seth took all my time.
I, I, you know, I, maybe I went over, but you know, I want these guys to know.
Give you my time.
Yeah, uh.
No comments for me.
No comment.
Okay, Bill?
Oh, I think it was a good meeting and I particularly liked the idea of the long-term plans financially so we can weed out things and, and set priorities and plan ahead. And we do have a very good crew and field and, and water plant and everything else. I think we're doing a very good job for the community and they have very few complaints anymore from people. And most of the complaints, of course, I want to generate some, but I just feel that's part of my job, representing the community. And, but I really appreciate the work and sincerity of the answers I give. And even when somebody gets mad at me and yells at me in the parking lot, that's all right. That's not, that's just fine with me, that doesn't bother me in the least, so I think we.
You talking about employees? Employees, employees yelling at you in the parking lot?
Yeah, that's occasionally.
Your turn.
Oh, thanks. Larry, it's been a very beneficial afternoon for me and I really appreciate the updates. And we have a wonderful district, we really do, and the reason we have a wonderful district is because of the quality of staff we have from the top wherever we're up and down and I really appreciate that and I don't take it for granted. And your dedication and your sincerity and particularly your knowledge is really appreciated and this has been a very beneficial afternoon for me because a lot of things I was wondering about you cleared up and so I really want to thank you for that and all the things that happened in our district. And it was a great lunch, Georgiana and others, uh, just a great afternoon. Thank you very much.
Okay, my comment, um, I, I'm very proud of the corporation yard and, and the administration building. Uh, we've taken some guff because of it, they said that we did it at the wrong time put, put the district at, uh, some financial disadvantages, but I think that the, I think it was the right time to do it. We did, I think we saved the district hundreds of thousands of dollars, by the way, we did it. And, uh, the automatic, uh, meters I think are gonna, are really great for the customers. I don't think they realize how a great a district they have and I'm hoping that someday they will. And I appreciate all your efforts because it's because of you that it, it happens.
On that comment, Larry, it is, we do hear periodically, um, because we do like to, um, answer people's questions, we like, we like to give that education component out there to customers. And we do hear responses back on, man, you can see that from my, and how do you know this? And so the AMR has really dealt that way, um, with, with going and identifying leaks and, and that. So we do get some customer, uh, feedback, um, when we're out there about, they, they, they didn't know that component was there and they're appreciative, man, it could have taken two months for me to notice that. Yep, and we found it in one day, so, nice.
Okay, we adjourned.